You look like a pumpkin.
All right, I'm good.
Start the meeting before I hit you.
I heard that. All right, so it's 3 o'clock and we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you can all stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick reminder, if you have your cell phones and if you can silence them for us, that'd be great. And if anybody would like to speak, just make sure you completed their little signing shit over there cards. Okay, so roll call. So in present, in attendance, we have, these sound so loud. Bob, Ed, Carol, and myself, and then Doug is online? Okay, so I need a motion for Doug.
I'll make the motion.
By any exception to circumstances to allow him to fully participate.
Said it better than me, yes.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The final agenda?
Any changes?
May I request that the agenda be amended to continue item 13B until the meeting of November 2nd, 2023?
One additional item.
And then item?
Well, continue.
13B.
13B to November 2nd?
Yes, sir.
And then 9D, we need to move to the November 16th meeting. PPAC didn't have a quorum last month, so they were not able to vote on it.
So 9B to?
D, like dog.
D as in dog.
To November 16th?
Yes.
So move it here by 5 o'clock.
So we have a motion on? Do I have a second?
I say move, second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public comment?
I have a stack. Do you want her to go? Okay, I didn't know where you wanted. So first is, I'm gonna make Nancy Havel up here. Nancy Straw from PPCA, she wanted to give an update on where we're at with the O&M agreement between the district and the community association.
I have about four of those.
Okay. Nancy Straw, 10505 Diamante Way. I live in Pelican Preserve and I just, I wanted to give you a quick update on where we stand with negotiations. As you probably know, Chelsea, Laura, John Grega, Fay from Mosso and I have been meeting regularly for several months, I think we started in June, to work through a new service provider agreement to replace the O&M agreement that we used to have between the CDD and Pelican Preserve. So our goal really with the whole thing was to craft a new agreement so that we could document and clarify our working relationship because it was a little bit murky at times, I think, in the past. So we wanted to make it a little more clear. And we really all came in with a shared goal of doing what's best for all of us and making sure the agreement addressed that. So we started with the standard service provider agreement that I think Tony had drafted for the CDD. And working through the first few pages of that, we're really pretty clear. I mean, we went through that fairly quickly, I would say, the agreement itself. When we got to the attachments, it got a little more, there was more discussion, I would say. But we hung in there and Exhibit A, there's Exhibits A, B, C, and then Attachment A. Exhibit A is just standard wording. And Exhibit B is where we agreed to the fee that's in the budget for $5,000 a month. And Exhibit C is the insurance coverage, so that too, there wasn't much to do. But Attachment A is where we really outline what is it Pelican Preserve will do in cooperation and for the CDD for that money each month. And that got into a lot more detail. So just, I'll brush through it quickly. You're gonna see a draft of it soon. It's with Legal Review right now, both of us have it in for Legal Review. But it talks about communications, about information flow, both ways. Excuse me. Talks about response time to inquiries and requests for help. Weekly inspections, that Pelican Preserve will assist the CDD with weekly inspections of the CDD assets. PPCA sharing knowledge that they have about facilities and infrastructure and so on, so they can execute their duties. Follow-up to assure that the vendors are doing their work as determined in the scope of work by CDD that was provided. Pelican Preserve will do follow-up. It also requires that we'll have a PPCA representative at the subcommittee meetings. We've had to do a little tag team on that. Jennifer Lewis goes when she can, but she has some conflicts, so I go if she can't. We also identify items to be referred to GSCDD customer care line that we've talked about in here, I think. CDD staff are going to attend meetings at Pelican Preserve, and they actually already have. Laura's come to the coffee with Adam and talked about the CDD and answered residents' questions. So we're getting better, I think, at the two-way communication. PPCA is gonna support the subcommittees, including in their budget development. And if that's not a board member, it might be Jennifer Lewis that you've all met, who works with KW. She does so much for us. We agreed too that PPCA will probably still be the first point of contact for a lot of Pelican Preserve residents who just wanna call somebody and have it done. But Jen knows who to call or who to send a ticket to or how to get things resolved, so she'll continue some of that. We're also going to ask each subcommittee to develop standards in cooperation with both PPAC and Pelican Preserve Community Association. We don't want some new thing coming in, especially if our, we trust all of our committee members. They're great volunteers. But if we get a whole new committee or we get a whole committee that walks away, we don't want surprises. So we wanna have some standards in place, and we'll work with them to develop those. We also would, Pelican Preserve Community Association would have a voting member on PPCA, which could bring us to eight instead of seven. And PPCA may attend and have input on all three of the subcommittees. Those are kind of the bullets out of that Exhibit, or Attachment A, I'm sorry. So the two, I think the two things really that are gonna come to you that might be worthy of some more consideration is the community association. In our effort to really stay fully engaged with the CDD and all of the subcommittees that are doing the work and PPAC, we'd like to have approval on any change or variation that exceeds $15,000. That's kind of a holding number right now. Laura can approve up to $10,000, Chelsea up to $30,000?
Thirty.
Oh, 30, sorry. So this would be in, oh, committee's 10, sorry, I got that mixed up.
That's okay.
So I just put in $15,000 for this draft version. And if PPCA did not approve it, it would go back to the subcommittee. It's not that it would just die, it would go back to the subcommittee. And they could further explain it so we could say, sure, that sounds great. Or they could modify it a little bit. The second one is the community association having a voting member on PPAC, which we did previously. We did have a board member who was a member on PPAC, Phil Neese, before he went off the board of the community association. So I just, I'll just say, I guess everybody has come to these meetings with a focus on getting this agreement developed and getting something out there that we could all really chew. And we want it to stand the test of time, because we're not all gonna be here forever. So we want it to outlast all of us. It didn't work before because things have changed so much since the O&M agreement was crafted, that we need to modify it. So ideally, it will stand the test of time. But we also know this is a transition year for us, this first year. And it's very likely that we're going to have to make some modifications or changes to it next year, before your fiscal year begins next year. We, of course, in Pelican Preserve, wanna keep a level of service and we want it to even improve over time. But we wanna be very actively engaged in that work too. We don't wanna be a bystander because we wanna help maintain the qualities that we have in Pelican Preserve. We're very proud of it and we wanna keep it that way. So we just would like to see all of our current levels of service maintained through the CDD assessment, which they have been. And we're very grateful to all the volunteers that work with us on all these committees. There's many of them, dozens of them.
Okay.
Yep.
Does anybody have any question, anything? Go ahead.
I just want a clarification. I don't think Chelsea's cap of the $30,000. She is, there is no cap as long as it's a budget item, whatever that amount is, currently. That's how it goes.
Okay. I misspoke on that one.
That's okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Judy Peak. She's just coming back looking for an update from us on her question about parking in Eagle Point from last month.
Yeah, just, was there anything discussed or? First of all, Judy Peak.
I believe if I'm, last meeting, it was Steph and Tony?
We haven't gotten together yet to do that. I have some initial thoughts. I just need to get Chelsea to do a memo to the board on some initial thoughts with regards to net utilization and liability issues, control issues. Absolutely.
Would it be by next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's good. Thank you.
Question.
Judy, he has a question for you. Judy?
I don't know if it's for Judy, maybe more for Steph. But if we're gonna take and, because we're gonna talk about some changes out here on the parking and the new maintenance building and all that, which means the dog park's going to go, and the dog park is going over there, what is going to be the time that the dog parks?
Daylight.
Daylight hours, period?
Yep.
Okay. So then, any body that would live in that area that would need overnight parking, that would not interfere with the dog park?
Theoretically, no. But we'll all work with Tony and we'll get a memo to you guys at the next meeting. Thanks, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Next is John Albion. He has a non-agenda item, discuss possible public meeting regarding recycling facility to be built by the closed landfill.
All right, hi. I'm John Albion. I live at 1230 Jewelstone Lane in Stony Brook at Gateway. And my concern is, I brought it to our board and our homeowners association. They thought it might be better if it would be perhaps done at the CDD level so that more communities can get involved. My first concern is, is that the Board of County Commissioners did not see the need to have such a significant facility to not have a public meeting. And I'm not talking about the meeting where they voted on it, but one that was out in the community. And I think that it's important that we understand what these ramifications may look like and be. One of my concerns, that's kind of a backdoor concern, is that we are very much concerned that could this be a step towards potentially reopening the landfill, since it's all having to do with waste management. There's other concerns, such as visual concerns, possibly audio concerns, for that matter, also our roadways. How do they intend to enter and exit the facility that's going to be there? This is a different sector than where they put the waste energy facility and the current recycling facility, which as you know, is basically down the street just off of Buckingham Road. And instead of keeping that all together, they're now extending it over to the landfill, which of course is a battle to get that closed back in 2006. So if that area is going to start potentially being expanded for any types of uses beyond the emergency uses for CDD, because I personally didn't have a problem after the hurricane. We all had to take a little bit of a hit to help our community. That was a one-time incident. This is a long-term situation. So I think it's important that we all understand what they're looking to do since they chose not to have that public meeting out here. And I think all of the communities should be invited to show up to see what that impact may look like for our roadways. We know Gateway Boulevard is getting a lot busier. We certainly know that at some point probably it's gonna be multilane all the way to State Road 82. And on top of that, how this may potentially affect even what types of services could be delivered, commercial services going down State Road 82, should be a consideration. That's why these are typically all put in area. Jails, landfills, waste energy facilities, they all tend to be in their own sector, so at least only one area is being affected. This is another area being affected after it had been closed down. So I would request that the board consider holding a public meeting where I believe county management, at least one if not more county commissioners, which can happen if it's an open public meeting, it wouldn't violate the Sunshine Law. Certainly whoever is gonna be the architect or engineer on it, just to be able, and certainly some from solid waste, by the way, so that we understand what the ramifications are going to be. Because the time to try to fix it isn't, or the whole situation isn't after it's built. So that's my request here today, at the request of our board, to have it go to this level rather than just do it seniorly in our own community. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, have you heard something that gives you an understanding that there might be an ingress egress off of Gateway Boulevard?
No, but.
Because I don't know how they would do it.
Well, my concern is if they're working with waste management, waste management, I believe, already has certain accesses potentially to the landfill.
Tony, do that road we put in, they don't have access to that.
Okay, well, I guess we're talking about the road to Pelican Preserve?
Correct.
Our emergency road. That's limited by virtue of the DRI and everything.
That's what I thought.
Well, and the part that's in the FPL easement, there is no interest that I'm aware of that the county has any interest in it. And it's not a general-purpose public road. It's limited solely for utilities access.
Emergency.
Emergency access. And as far as any other, and we own the FPL easement land. So there's a piece, actually, there's a gap between where that waste manager property is, as I recall. You've got waste manager, you've got the Stony Brook tract with that, you know, that buffer tract. And then you have the FPL lands, and then the roads be all of that. So I don't know how they'd get to that.
That's why I was wondering. The only thing I can think of is that when you turn off onto the emergency road, if you do an immediately right to the north, there was a road and a fence and a gate that went up. But I don't know where that went to, but I didn't think that it would allow you to get over to the other side of their property.
I think what's important is that we make sure that they understand that no trucks are gonna be going all the way through Gateway to try to go to a recycling facility that is significantly further away than where they currently have it, which Colonial would clearly be appropriate for, Lee Boulevard, State Road 82. I mean, that's clearly why it was designed that way, and then go down a Buckingham Road to get there. Not necessarily having traffic coming from the south, for example, somehow coming up Daniels and going all the way through Gateway Boulevard. And I would rather make sure that we get, we understand and that they understand. I think there needs to be a message sent. This should have had a public meeting, okay? It's a significant type of change, of a land use no less, that could directly affect what we experience. And it seems to me, therefore, they had an obligation to have that type of meeting with us so that people like me aren't questioning how they're intending to do certain things. If I choose not to go to the public meeting, that's on me. But to not have one is not right. And I know what happened to close the landfill because I was in the middle of that one.
Is there any plan for a planning meeting that anybody knows about?
Yeah, I was gonna say, have you had any contact with Pelican Preserve and specifically Carol Broke? Is that a name that resonates with you?
I've not had contact with anybody except my own board.
Okay, because Carol is spearheading a multi-community effort. And the things that you addressed, the roads that can be used to service it, like Colonial, Lee Boulevard, 82, they are addressed. There's odor controls, there's sound controls, a lot of pledges, okay, that they're gonna do this. I completely agree with you that it should have been a public meeting. I totally support moving forward. But there are communities, other than you're bringing it up today, that are spearheading the effort to get some type of, and then we're also taking off the table entirely, the reopening of the landfill.
So would the board like me to request Mr. Doug Whitehead to come to a?
I think if you're going to do it, Bob hit the nail on the head that if Pelicans doing it, let's make it a joint meeting such that they understand that this is not just one, there's several involved in this deal that you gotta appease us all.
Would you like me to request a public meeting be held? Or Mr. Doug Whitehead to come and address any questions that you may have at a public forum like this, and then follow up with the public meeting?
I think, my opinion, I think go ahead and do a public meeting and get everybody in favor at the same time.
I can make the request of.
And have Cecil, have all interested parties come in. Because you're right, this was done in the dead of night.
We'll make a request.
And can I make a quick statement?
Understand that when they're making these decisions, there's gonna be pushback if you don't give us the proper consideration of those that may be affected by having a public meeting of something this size. There's a lesson to be learned in that, that I feel has apparently not stuck with them. The second is that then we are paying close attention, and therefore you need to keep in touch with what designated people to make sure as it goes along that someone isn't gonna get a bright idea and the rest of us be left in the dark. So.
Doug, Doug. That has a comment.
Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, what I would also suggest is that we reach out to the president's council.
Hey Doug. Doug, give it a second.
Can't hear you.
Hold on.
Somebody messed with my speakers.
Just let me know.
Hold on.
Okay, how about now?
Beautiful.
Great.
Okay, great. What I would also recommend is we reach out to the president's council to request a point of contact regarding this issue from each community, so we can also have kind of a unified front. And it may be something that we could organize through the existing effort. Because I think if we, it would be to our benefit to not only represent Gateway District, but also have representatives from the different communities. And we could come in and understand the needs and the issues from our whole community as a whole.
Yeah, we'll make a request that we count all waste. Big enough space to accommodate. Yeah, of course.
I'm guessing.
I'm just saying, I don't wanna, you know, because it's.
I'm guessing the majority of the people in this community know.
Agenda item, no different than them choosing someone to do janitorial.
Wait a minute. Thank you.
Stay tuned to our website. All right. Who can't hear us?
Give us a second.
Georgia, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. It just wasn't as loud as it was before.
Okay. Steven or Mike, do you?
Hey, Chelsea, the volume coming out of the room is significantly less.
Okay.
That's right. Okay. Steve's Brad from the Florida Government Utility Authority. I just wanna thank your excellent work of your staff and attorney. Excellent partnership between three governments, lead, our authority. Good work, and I think all the customers will benefit. High directional flow. So I would just urge your support, that's recommendation.
Mike, you're good or you wanna talk? Okay. No, any additional public comment?
Nope, nobody online, nothing else.
Okay, so local achievements and recognition. Do you have anything advisory committee, I just.
I don't know if he's online.
Pelican Ponds?
Uh, no, parks and wrecks for Gateway.
Doug, did you have anything you want?
No.
All right, so add for approval the minutes.
I move to approve agenda items A, B, and C. Minutes for September 1st and 22nd, October 5th, board session, and October 5th, board.
I was second for discussion because I like this. So the second set. Item A, the second A, line 49, it says the word Pelican. I think, Dallas County. For that. And then on the voting on. I would like to add a comment. For line 103. Which is right after Joe Ma, make the, of the road, all the comments from Tony, not in this minute.
This was after the issue of the who owns what?
Yes. To read it, it kinda, it's just missing all 20. And then also line 119. Like to change the word comment to request it. Parting the detail, it was a comment that.
Just amended.
David?
Aye.
I saw, go ahead with the consent agenda items, and we've already pulled out.
I move on consent agenda items A, B, and C. I can.
Second for discussion. I just had one thing. On the FPL consent agreement, enforcement, the referencing to the sheet numbers didn't seem to match. Plan sheet numbers like 201, 202. Had stuff in there like. I looked all over for those damn sheets, they weren't there.
They've got some comments made. So. That approved contention.
I think I'm sure, I'm not sure if the board picked up all my changes. I mean, because, you know, I have copies of top four items. And Chelsea sent on to FPL.
So this consent agreement is for the. That is only, it has been.
Sewer enforcement and irrigation with all their conditions and all that.
And quite frankly, a lot of them are, they have a lot of restrictions already obtained in the right of. The easements record. Just a couple areas that I.
Have a motion, Ed, will you second with please?
I'll second with.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now D.
It was table to November 16.
Oh, I pull in B. Okay, thank you.
District engineer.
So Stephen Agapi is online?
Yep. Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I can't hear you guys super well. It cuts in and out. I could hear Doug fine. I think he's on the call as well, but we'll get through this together. Irrigation pump station generator contractor is waiting delivery of the generator. It's a long lead item, so that project is just kinda waiting for that to progress. Irrigation enforcement improvements, getting towards 100% plans there. Flowway wear adjustments, we're closing that one out. Just waiting for South Florida to approve the weirs 1, 2, and 3. We got their approval for Ponds 38. Griffin utility relocation, working on record drawings and punch list items. Lower Hawthorne well, we have been reaching out to individual contractors to get quotes. We have a meeting next week with a particular well driller who seems to be pretty motivated. So we're gonna meet with them and see, you know, how we can make this work. Phase 2, your 2 lake bank restoration, we have a meeting next week with Met Tower to go over their schedule for the four remaining lakes in Gateway. Gateway's utility storage building, we reviewed the bids we received and we have a letter of recommendation next up on the agenda, so I'll skip this. Gateway admin building, we're getting the DO application resubmitted. And from there, we'll just be waiting for Lee County to sign off on that. Fiscal year, 25 lake banks.
Does that mean, does that mean we're close? Or not?
For what?
For today.
Not when you go to the county.
No. I mean, are we close on getting everything permitted and whatever so we can start? Maybe by the end of this year, first?
It won't be by the end of this year. It's, we're delayed about a month. We have yet to, they're supposed to be resubmitting by close of business today.
Yeah.
We had some hangups with lighting, so we had to get photometrics and make sure we met all of their requirements. Because of course, you know, they have different lighting requirements for the sidewalk, for the building, for commercial, for, so that's been the hangup. But I believe we're delayed about a month right now.
So we're really looking at February?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe March.
Yes, ma'am.
But when do you think we'll go to advertise for bid?
I'm hoping by the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. FY25 design for the lake banks, we're just in the preliminary phase of this project. We have tentatively the 60% design scheduled for February deliverable for board's approval, a review and comment, I should say. Lake construction management, ITB number 7 for four of the ponds, lakes. There was no bids received for that, so we're rebidding those four lakes. ITB number seven for four of the ponds, lakes, there was no bids received for that, so we're rebidding those four lakes. Keep in mind, the other two that were accompanying the set of six are due tomorrow. And it seems like there's a lot of interest in those two, so we'll get those bids tomorrow. Review those and bring a recommendation back to the board. And at the same time, the remaining four lakes will be back on the street, so. The hope is the bidders who bid on these two tomorrow that didn't win will hopefully go after these four remaining lakes. Public Works Storage Building, Eric is on the call and he has an agenda item later on in the evening to discuss the conceptual layout. Supplemental engineers report, we received comments from legal and bond counsel and we're making those changes now. And we'll return that, we'll turn that back around tomorrow. That's it for our task authorizations. For development updates, Arborwood, they're continuing to work on punch list items on the stormwater side. Daniel's Parkway Apartments, they did resubmit. We have a due date next month to get that turned around. Santa Lou's, construction is ongoing. I asked for an update on their punch list. Still waiting for Lennar to wrap some of those items up. Centosa Apartments is, we're waiting for them to resubmit. And the remaining three here, we've got FP Restoration, they have not submitted yet. Prado, I reached out to Lennar. There's a couple of items that are, you know, still remaining that aren't essential, they're not necessarily bond items, but, you know, it's our opinion, they need to be taken care of, so. I'm going to be working with Tony, going forward to see what, you know, we can do there. On FGUA, there's a inter-local agreement on the agenda, or maybe that was already on the consent agenda, but we're reviewing their plans right now. And that's, that's kind of a wrap.
Yeah, the only comment, Stephen, on the Prado item, there are things that are specifically related to the construction bond. But we've tried to tie the lack of response to resident items that are close, but not exactly in the construction bond. So we're looking for a package on that, correct?
Okay.
Stephen, this is Ed. Hey, Santa Lou's, they've been out there doing some work on those fire backflow li, or the backflow preventer lines and the fire suppression lines. I don't know what you guys had on the punch list of all the details, but it still, to me, looks pretty, pretty shoddy. That community about two weeks ago transferred over, closed out the developer, and it went to the 36 unit owners. Those people have no clue of what's going on or what they've inherited. Is the punch out and all of that, who's checking that to make sure that when Lennar leaves? All issues, all I's have been dotted and all T's have been crossed, so those people don't get hurt, because they have no clue of what's going on.
So our inspector's going out weekly and updating the punch list and sending that to Lennar. And then once, you know, everyone comes to agreement, the punch list items are done. Gateway staff and myself will go out there and put eyes on it and make sure everyone is in agreeance and signs off on it.
Can you make sure that, or I could have Chelsea do it, I'd like to be copied on that, because the, like I said, those people have no clue what's going on. Lennar tells them one thing, they, they believe it. And that's been a mistake in the past.
As.
So we need to really double check, make sure everything on a punch list that could fall back on them to get stuck with, needs to be done before Lennar is.
Our punch list is only going to cover our items.
I understand, I understand.
I can send it to you every week as, as we get it.
Yeah, I'm taking, I'm trying to work with them on the things that are non-CDD.
Yeah, we can get you the CDD punch list items.
Thank you.
Anything else for Stephen?
Questions when we.
Okay. All right. Fabio, Ed Moore from the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee is here. If you would like to let him give a brief update, since they did meet this week from their summer hiatus.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The, the plans are wonderful. We looked at, you know, the two different plans that, that came about and we liked the second set. One of the things that we do think needs to be added are special needs 88 equipment for kids to play on. I think that's, that's really a must. And then restroom facilities near the courts. Yeah, near the courts.
You talking about pickleball?
Mm-hmm, basketball, whatever, whatever courts, you know, is decided upon there. That's needed. And then water bottle filling stations. We need to have that because it's an active place and we need to have water. Even though they bring water, need to be able to refill it. Pardon me, the biggest thing that we really want, and it was unanimous amongst the committee, and that is the amphitheater. And I know that was removed, but I don't think that we've done a very good job probably in telling you why we want it. And the amphitheater in, in our minds could really bring this community together at the school level. Because if you have, if we have the high school bands involved, where we can bring in jazz band, we can bring in choir, we can bring in the strings. You know, we could have some wonderful Sunday afternoon events with just the local bands. We could even do, do a, a jazz band contest between the high schools, right? I mean, that would be a lot of fun and it would get the community involved. On top of that, there are local musicians that are good, that have strong followings, as well as regional musicians. And if we think beyond the amphitheater of just being music and think about wrapping that music into a taste of Gateway or a shrimp fest or something like that, then it could be a huge event every year that could in fact be a moneymaker to help pay for the amphitheater. Questions?
I had hard, I don't know about the rest of you, but on the, when I went to the website and tried to download that map, I couldn't read hardly. It was blurry. It was so blurry, I couldn't read anything, so, but I remember when we went back a couple of years ago, we were doing the park and Home Montes did the deal. I don't recall, but what was the rating on the amphitheater? Because I, I didn't think that, that dog could hunt.
Well.
Wasn't a popular item, that's why I was asking. But what I didn't understand is where, at that time, they were talking, I believe, of having the amphitheater over east of the pool and kind of looking toward the pond. Is that, is that what you're considering?
Because, because that has a nice field there.
Well, it has a topography that would lend itself to that.
Exactly, exactly. So there's seating and, you know, people could bring chairs, lawn chairs and whatever.
But are we talking about, when I hear, I think amphitheater, I think of what I saw in Indianapolis, where you have 2,000 feet, seed seeding and all that. You're talking about a grass field?
Yes, yes.
Nothing, nothing.
A band shell.
Just a band shell, just a band shell, not, not, not what you're talking about, because I'm from Indiana too, and I know exactly, exactly what you're talking about. But just a grassy, a grassy place. Edison Home does something similar. They, they don't have a band shell, so to speak, but they do have a, a pavilion, but they.
So you would have a platform like a stage?
Yes.
And then a shell or a, a cover over that, and then everything else would be open air?
I believe that it should have the back on it to amplify the sound towards the audience.
Okay, but I mean, nothing in the way of a structure such as a.
Offices or storage areas.
No, I mean a structure like a, a cover over the seated area. It's, it'd just be grass seating.
Open air.
Okay.
Open air. Because that, that way you could bring in your tables, you know, for your chili cook-off or whatever you decided to do in that area.
That's where I thought it was, I had a hard time reading that.
Yeah, it was, it was difficult.
It was blurry.
Doug's online.
I gave, I gave up on it. I said, hell with this, I couldn't read it.
Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I think, and Ed touched on a couple of things I was going to say, and Ed and I have been close to these discussions for probably 15 plus years.
You mean, you mean.
Tinkle, yeah, yeah, he, we both have been around long enough where, when the whole discussions around parks and designs for many, many years. The one thing that I think we just need to be very clear on is, and we may need to get some options on this, is when we talk about an amphitheater, it, it can take on a very grand scale at high cost. I think ultimately what Ed said is, first and foremost, you need a stage area. And priority two would, would be, would be some type of cover, whether it's a full amphitheater, I think that's, might be a little bit outside of our budget, but let's get some options on that. I think, you know, a stage with some type of covering on top, get some options. I do think it's a great idea, but this is one area where you could go completely overboard. I think at one point, there was an amphitheater area and it was upwards of the, you know, the million plus range, which we just don't have that kind of budget. So I think it's a good idea. We just need to price it with, with options and land on something that's feasible.
Well, and, and so later on in the agenda packet, we do have the schematic of the, the park, park plan, which there's, there was two, I think, two schematics. The Parks and Rec Advisory weighed in and they had a preference to the one, the layout they liked more, but this is only schematic, the details, you get to the details when you get to the design.
Yeah, I have one, just one quick recommendation. While we're on this call, is it possible for Georgia to email us? The images, because the ones you pull online are very blurry, they're hard to read, so it's, it's very difficult to even come up with an, an assessment of whether what we like or not, because it's, it's very difficult to read.
Yeah, well, we'll get it.
Quick question on this is that, what hoops do we have to jump through to do this? I.e., do we have to get county approval on what we're doing?
Yes. Well, no, not on the, not on the schematic, you'd have to go through the whole DO process.
I'm talking about the project. In other words, we get done with this, what, what are we going to run into? Because before we get too far down the line, just of what we've seen on the building. What scares me on this is they start asking you, what's the attendance or what is the service you're going to provide on this? Which they then translate into boo coo parking spaces. How, what are you going to do all that? Because there is not enough room in there. What I'm guessing they're going to have you do, so for every 10 people, you have to have one parking space or whatever.
Well, there's other, there's ways to.
That is a problem.
There's, there's alternative ways to meet parking standards, if it's through bike racks and things like that, but yes, it's based off of uses.
But it takes space. That's the thing I'm worried about. I want to make sure before we commit to a whole bunch of things, we find out that we have to have parking space for 300 people, there's no room.
That would be all part of a pre-application meeting with the county, and if we have the schematic of what our intent is, they could guide us to the right codes that we'd have to abide by.
And then the other one is, is your committee thinking about, on this band shelter or this amphitheater, electrical, lighting?
At, at, at least, at least electric, electrical. I don't know about the lighting, I mean.
So you need to provide electric for the a-hams, you know, for the musicians and all, if they need to have.
Most likely it's going to be at night, I think.
Yeah, that's, but that's real detailed orient. I think we're thinking more conceptual right now. That's engineering for them to figure that out.
There is a very modest band shell in Pelican Reserve. It's pretty bare bones. I don't know if you've been over to look at it.
I haven't.
But I would encourage you to come over, take a look at it.
They have one?
They have one, we've had one. And we hold a lot of concerts there, and we do Memorial Day services, there's Easter sunrise, there's a lot of things that go on. So I completely support the concept, and it does bring the community together.
Ed, I'd be more than happy to take you over there. I'm sure Bob might.
Yep, be happy to.
Yeah, I might, I might get a call, I like to say that. Well, I can't.
So.
Any other questions for Ed?
Anything for Brad?
Thank you, Ed, for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting him jump in.
I do have G-Packs, now I can pull up what you're actually full title stuff.
Okay, perfect. All right, so go ahead, admin agenda items.
I have an A.
We, did we put anything? No, okay.
Item, this is for an ITB that went out. And engineer's recommendation is to contract with SAFA, S-A-F-A, or I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, Construction LLC, and then not to exceed amount. And this would be for the utilities maintenance building, which would be right over here. So we'd be able to take a lot of these conexes and order inventory and prepare instead of ordering as we go.
I saw Steve's recommendation letter. This is one of those bad news, good news stories. Bad news is that you, you're scared to death when you see a 100% difference between the bidders. It scares the daylights out of you, but then when you think about paying for it, you're happy as can be, because it's half the price. I just want to make sure we did our due diligence of checking these people out, that they don't have a history of low bidding and then change ordering us to death. Has somebody contacted their clients? I assume that's been.
Yeah, there was a lot of feedback in the, in the handout we got.
I saw a lot, but I didn't, I, I didn't, didn't see anything that said that never occurred. That's what I was trying to find.
Tetra Tech did contact their references and they sung their praises and not only reiterated Tetra Tech's recommendation to award.
And then the other one is, is that, looking at the split of the bid, one of the biggest items, when you look at this, is, is, is the differentiation a labor issue or a material issue? This one here looked like material issue, which was surprising to me. The building, they got, the one contractor, I think, was about 260, 270 for the building. These guys are half of that. Which then asks, makes the question is, was this a generic building? Or was it a pre-designed engineered building where they were both bidding on the same thing? Because if they were both bidding on the same thing and you got that kind of range, something is strange.
Though, Ed, it's not, it's not one particular building, so we have like performance specs for the building and dimensions. And essentially describes the components and the design and construction of the building, but who they hired to pre-engineer and provide that building is up to them.
Well.
So they could have used two different, you know, building manufacturers.
What had me confused is when you say the erection of a pre-engineered metal building, it's pre-engineered by them, not a pre-engineered product that they are just installing. Is that correct?
Right, they won't be, they're going to, they're going to use a provider of structural buildings that's going to pre-engineer the metal building. They themselves will not be designing the building.
But my point was, is that we didn't select a pre-engineered building that both would do the materials.
We did not tell them company, building from company X. We said, here's the specs.
That's what I want to make sure of, because you just don't get that differential in price when you're both looking at the same document, especially on materials.
So we had the same, you know, concerns you had, Ed. You know, looking at these and, you know, there's obviously a lot of differences in the prices and. You know, we talked to them and they said, you know, they were confident in their price and they didn't, you know, make a mistake and they're confident they can do it for that price, so. You know, I'm in the same boat as you, but, you know, at the same time, it's, they had good reviews and they were, they're backing it up, so, I mean.
We have a, a reasonable contingency in our deal to anticipate surprises.
All right, Carol has a comment.
Okay, and just, just refresh my memory, where is this going again?
Right over here.
Right here.
Right over here.
Well, this one's going over here.
Yeah, by the parking lot.
Right here. This would be a utility.
So be, between me and the, the street pin?
Yes.
When you and the fence. Just beyond the parking lot.
Just, just outside the parking lot.
Outside the parking lot.
Beyond the paved parking lot.
Carol, I can show you after, after.
Okay, point me.
Within this, this fence.
Okay.
So I need a motion.
I'll make the motion. We accept the recommendation for SAFA.
I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second, I'm in favor?
Aye.
And in doing so, the board.
Your mic gone?
Right, thank you all, good night.
Making so, adopted the recommendation of the engineer and also made a determination that the SAFA Construction is the responsible, responsible vendor, submit the lowest responsive, responsible, best bid, most advantageous.
That's what I meant to say.
That's what Bob just said.
That's in the requested action. Thank you.
Yes, Bobby's so.
I, I second what Bob just said.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. All right. Item B.
Thank you. Item B, like I said, FGUA is here, we've been working on this. We started this conversation a little over a year ago. This, we've, we've gone in depth with, between FGUA, Lee County, our, our general counsel. We believe that this is, this is, as it sits, it's a two-year agreement, but has options for renewal. Long-term, and it, and in the long-term, it, like you said earlier, it could be bidirectional. But staff recommends approval of this in our local agreement.
Thanks for sending me the engineering report. I didn't, I don't remember seeing it before. But anyway, read all that and everything looked, looked great to me. It only brought out one issue that is a ball at our park. They mentioned the fact that some of these pressure readings were strange and it would be indicative of where we possibly had.
We looked into those.
Did we check that out?
Yes, yes, we did. Ed's referring to the modeling report that Tetra Tech provided to us and that they called out some questionable reads, which staff inspected, followed up and inspected.
So the valves were all open?
And made sure that the valves were all open. Yeah.
That, that's critical. Other than that, everything looked good to me.
Just only one comment, I guess. Chelsea, I can't recall. When is the Lee County Commission scheduled to have?
They're waiting on our approval and I believe it's next month. I'd have to go back in my emails. But we, we have to take the hard copies down to them and they would get the three amendments to the inter-locals, which is after this item. If this item gets approved, we would take it down to them and then they would approve the amendments to the three inter-locals.
Right, because this agreement with F G U A is contingent upon approvals and amendments with Lee County.
Have we done plans or is this just a preliminary?
No, they are in plans. They've actually, they're working, they've awarded it today to a contractor.
Are we boring 82?
Do you want to come up to?
Yeah, I just wanted to find out. I didn't see all those details.
They, they boring 82. We don't want that.
Is the, is the connection going to be via a bore?
It will be indirect.
And size?
A 12-inch.
12-inch, okay. Well, I like the idea of long-term. Anytime that going forward, we have a problem, this can always be a reversal once they get their feet on the ground.
Yep.
That if we have a problem or if we would have an issue to where we would have a catastrophe in one section down here, we could backfeed water over temporarily. So it's, it's got a lot of benefits for us.
It's mutually beneficial for both governmental.
It's one of those intergovernmental deals.
Initially, it's, it's to their benefit to help them while they get their capital projects going. But long-term, it is mutually beneficial.
That's why I wanted to hear that 12-inch, that, that, that helps a lot.
Okay. Move to approve. So we have a motion?
I'll second.
Go ahead. All right, our motion is first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The next, so the next three items, the district has existing inter-local agreements with Lee County. And because you just approved the F G U A inter-local agreement, we need to amend the three inter-locals. The first one, this one, item C, is the master acquisition utility agreement. And so that has been reviewed by Lee County and their general counsel, Tony and staff. So we're recommending approval of this amendment.
And the purpose for these three amendments is to modify the district's, modify the district's utility service area. Because the initial project and acquisition identified it in boundaries. And so this extends it to be able to provide the service to F G U A. And then wastewater agreement modification is to, I think Chelsea mentioned it before, that we don't get charged by Lee County for sewer charges for the water that goes to F G U A. That's the next one.
Okay. Next one.
Now, so we are, make sure I understand that. We're amending our service area to be able to incorporate the sale of water to this entity.
And if you look at, it's on page 329, if you can bring that up.
And, and then the.
On the screen.
The second, second question on this, Tony, and I, I haven't looked back at that original contract. Every time I look at it, I get sick. But our agreement with Lee County, does it stipulate any maximum daily peak or average flows that would create us a problem with this?
I don't believe so. I think.
The, there is a limitation of how much that we can.
To F G U A, but not to the district.
Not to us.
So from Lee County, we don't have a penalty or a surcharge for excessive peak or average daily flow?
No, the way the agreement reads between Lee County and the district, as to the district customers other than F G U A is that they provide the potable water we need to service our customers within our service.
And now, and now F G U A is our customer.
But they're capped at 500,000.
And then the second deal, as I recall, our contract with Lee County on water, potable, is just flat rate per thousand gallons. It's not sliding scale or negative sliding scale?
I think it's just.
It's a bulk rate.
Bulk rate, but it's, it's one price for all.
That's what I mean. So whether we, we use a million gallon or a billion gallon a month, it's the same, same cost per thousand.
And, and so speaking of rates, you all during the utility rate fee adjustments have already added a rate, don't ask me what rate is, give me a minute.
Percent?
Two percent.
No, 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 no.
Something else?
A bulk rate. We did not have a bulk rate prior to this inter-local. So you have already adopted with the fee schedule, the utility fee schedule, the bulk rate that F G U A will be paying to us. So I can get that to you, I just don't have it on handy.
Okay, so we have a motion by Carol?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ed, all in favor? Aye.
So the next one is the wastewater amendment to the inter-local with Lee County.
The total agreement.
Move to approve?
This is for the potable.
No, this one's wastewater. This one's wastewater. D is wastewater. E is potable.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a motion by.
This is wastewater.
By Carol for D. And second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Now it's your potable.
Now's potable.
Come on, Ed.
I'll make the motion of approving. The wastewater agreement amendment.
No, potable. We're a potable. We're a potable.
See, if you were away, the potable.
Another senior moment on this.
We have a motion by Ed? Second? We have a second by Carol?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Chelsea, before we send everything off, just for clarification, exhibits, I'll double check them because exhibit B to the F G U A agreement needs to have the additional what Austin did.
Okay. All right.
Do they need the science stuff?
Told you out there in the hallway, there's a lot more legal than there is engineering on getting that water out there.
Okay.
Do we need to?
Next pause. This next item is autonomous mowing with J S M. So we've actually, actually Doug Banks brought this to our attention a couple of weeks back. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brought this to our attention that there, there are these types of mowers out there that, kind of like your Roomba at home if you have one of those, but for mowing. We've done a couple test runs and J S M, if, if this is something that we're interested in doing, Prac did, did recommend approval of this at the meeting this week. But this would be entering into a contract with J S M for $50,244, which would be approximately a savings of $16,000 if we removed the mowing services from the mainskip contract. It would be having an autonomous mower for the Sherman soccer fields, just the fields themselves, not the, not the surrounding areas, but it's all by GPS. And that would be for this fiscal year to test it out and see if it works. And if it does work, then we would hopefully look to purchase one ourselves next fiscal year, which would save jokingly, Prac mentioned, you don't got to worry about if somebody calls him sick.
So it's a G I, it's a G I S mower, basically.
G P S.
Roomba for grass.
Yes.
Do what? A Roomba for grass?
Right.
And just, and just for a little additional, for some additional context, the county Parks and Rec has shifted over to this. I know of at least three fields that are using this. And it's pretty amazing. It even allows the kids, you know, if there's someone out there playing or whatever, it will literally go around stuff. You can stop it, it'll resume. It's pretty interesting watching it and the, the quality seems to be really good, so.
I just have one question. So you mean, when you say the fields, the fields only or the fence area within the fields?
That's the field only.
So we still have mainscape.
Would still do the surrounding.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second by Ed, all in favor? Aye.
Ed, this is where, this type of technology, this is, it's starting to be adopted on the golf courses as well. It's pretty interesting.
All right, the next, we want to pull up the actual site over. We had an updated version come in late yesterday from Tetra Tech.
It's not this one?
It's not that. It's, it's been tweaked a little bit. Yes, this is.
Can we blow that up?
Yeah.
Okay, or shrink it down, see it all.
Okay, so Tetra Tech is in design. And so I wanted to get your guys' input on this layout. The intent was to take, if you all remember, the previous R V parking lot design that was supposed to be in that back field and incorporate that with a maintenance building kind of towards the back of the property that could store Parks and Rec Public Works equipment. And this is the layout that they have, so I'm looking for your input. And Eric?
Should we place the dog parks?
Should we place, yeah. Surface, is this blacktop?
Yes.
Asphalting? And I am assuming that that retention area is runoff for all the water?
Yes. Eric, I don't know if you want to add anything else?
Nothing major, just, you know, we had to incorporate access to the well sites in the northeast corner. The maintenance building has through access on one of the three overhead doors we're proposing in the east side of the building. And, you know, we just tried to duplicate essentially the existing parking lot in the place of the dog park.
Is that a total additional 250 or 264? I can't see.
Looks like 264.
264, okay.
That's, that's in addition to what's out there right now? Or is that inclusive?
Eric, it's not in addition to or uninclusive.
I believe that was the additional, but let me verify that.
Is, is the detention basin a percolation gallery? Or is it got an overflow or what? Where's the water that comes into that retention basin off the parking lot? Does it store there and percolate or does it overflow?
It'll overflow. That's, it's a detention area, not a retention area.
Okay, where?
Drainage. And completed.
See any pipe coming out? Where does it overflow to?
Everything flows to the pond at the west end of Soccer Drive.
Is there a pipe I'm not seeing there?
There's, it, it's underground, but yes.
Well, you can see the dashed lines. We haven't done the drainage design yet, but we'll be connecting to the existing structures that you see, the dashed lines and the black squares. That's your existing drainage. That flows west.
What I'm going to, trying to solve a problem. We've had, I think this might be the area where we've had some issues with Timber Creek. When we size that pipe, just to play it safe, let's just make sure that it can handle water that we produce and maybe a little extra.
We have spoken about this.
So somebody thinking about this thing?
Yeah, we've had, we've had the conversations. Eric, I don't know if you want to go down that rabbit hole?
Okay, I can speak to it a little bit. I, I know we had done a drainage study on the soccer complex previously due to the frequent flooding of Soccer Drive. The conclusion was that you're getting a lot of off-site flow, not just from Timber Ridge, I believe you said it was called, but also the airport has a control elevation that's a foot higher than Gateway. And I believe there is indication that some of that flow is finding its way into this area through surcharge. So it's a larger issue than just Timber Ridge and requires, or would require some more extensive drainage study to try to resolve it. And it's, it's not an easy fix.
My point is, I just want to make sure that this becomes a pond that floods the parking lot. So that we have the ability to get rid of the water. Because the, the report that came out didn't satisfy me as far as we've still got a problem. It's coming from someplace. So if we don't have a solution to it and/or have an answer to it, then let's have a solution to get rid of it, should it come our way in this particular area with a larger pipe to get it out.
We, so we have had conversations about upsizing that pipe. I will tell you that, that is going to blow the budget for this. But it is something that we need to consider.
What size are you talking about blowing from an 18 to a 24?
Well, you have to run the entire distance of Soccer Drive and then you have to look at the, the pond.
It's the pond.
It's just a bubble up in the pond.
Yeah.
All the ponds are interconnected with a 48-inch pipe. So that's, I can tell you, it's no problem. No problem at all. The issue is getting it from here down there. That's the issue. And, yeah, you'll have a difference in price, but there's all kinds of, this is not one where you've got a lot of, what do you call it, structural road traffic or anything like that on it. We could go to some of the plastic materials like Flex Tran, some of the other pipes, much less expensive than concrete. 36-inch, 24-inch, whatever. I just want to make sure that.
We'll have.
I don't want that, one, I don't want this thing to fill up and overflow. But it looks like to me it offers a, a solution to us for what we already know exists as a problem in this area.
We'll continue.
I do have a question regarding the detention area. Are we going to live it as is? Have we looked on site? Because I've been there probably two years ago.
We have.
And I can tell you, there was some damage, there was some, people were riding through it and, and it's not exactly what it looks like here.
No, it would have, no, there's.
It's going to be graded.
We'd have to clear it.
It has to be cleared because there's debris, there's, there's a lot of, yeah. So that, that's my only thing, okay.
South end is pretty. And what's, what's our setback requirements on this? We, we met all the setback requirements? Nobody's going to be grieving us over that?
Looked pretty close to the community.
That's why.
I think we're 50 feet back.
Okay.
So is everybody okay with the layout and?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Doug.
Okay, so with the building being in that back corner, I don't have a problem with that. However, I want us to be looking at this from a scalable point of view. So ideally, when you, most fields have, I know this isn't maintenance for the fields necessarily, but I want to be thinking about that as well. So we have, I want to make sure that we're considering having the ability to have access to the fields from that back corner. Also, it might be a really nice place to be able to have material storage, whether it's sand or dirt or, you know, other things that you.
What about that building?
That's the only area you can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, we can, we can.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and so I know we have that little, it looks like there's a little drive-up area there. Let's just look at that area for either future expansion consideration, a covered area or something where you could have access to, to the fields from that, from that back corner. So let, let's just think about future expansion in that corner.
Talking about back here.
What's the timeline?
It's in design right now.
It's in our first budget.
Yeah. The T A, the task authorization has already been approved. Yeah, yeah, there, the, the TA, the task authorization has already been approved, and, and there, this is, I wanted to get in front of you if you had any big changes.
What, what, what is a six-foot SWLK?
Sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk.
Oh, it says six.
Never seen it done that way, okay, is this fenced?
Well, it says five there, but six below.
Yes.
Yes, it's fenced, this, this is fenced, you can see, and then there'd be an access.
Says chain link fence on it.
And we did talk about, I remember when we did, I reached out to last year with Mark, and a lot of the time the field one and two get overused because of the parking, so hopefully this will also lead to the overusage, and allow people to park away at the end, and, and we can, you know, be more flexible with those fields, so.
And just think about access to, you know, um, from the parking lot directly to the fields, to say people are having to walk a significant amount, so just like we have existing today, we have basically gates, is that what those are?
It's no fence here.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe put in some pedestrian gates like Bob was saying.
Yeah, yeah, just, 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 uh, cut-throughs, that's all you need, just pedestrian gates.
I see little islands. What, what are we looking at budget-wise for, for this improvement?
Eric, have you guys put together an EOPC, or are we only, we're only at?
No, we're not that far along. We're still in preliminary design. We, we've got, um, architectural and structural at sixty percent design for the building, um, but site, you know, this is just a conceptual site plan at this point, so we haven't done an OPC.
And the reason why we're, we're that far along with the building is because y'all just approved this, basically the same building over here, so we wanted to reuse those designs.
Can you move the picture up just a little bit to the north? See, no, the other way. So, we, we've shot, we have nothing left going south?
Yeah.
No, okay.
Now, and, and speaking of the south, you know, when we were talking about drainage, uh, with Chelsea, we, we'd mentioned maybe we could berm this off to prevent some of the off-site flow from coming in, the problem is you got that KOA site that you, you can't really put a berm across their access, and, and so even if we burned the eastern property line, uh, that would be the weak point, uh, we can reduce the, um, ability for drainage to flood the site, but, uh, we can't close that off completely, so, thought I mentioned that.
Then the problem someplace else.
Yeah, we don't want to direct all the flooding to them.
Send it to the airport, build the berm real high.
So.
There's no other feedback, everybody's okay with this, which is, I guess, the sidewalk to go into the back entrance of the.
Yeah, have some pedestrian entry points, whatever's appropriate.
Eric, any, anything else? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Do you want a motion to go ahead with this?
Uh, if you, I mean.
I so moved.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
I have a second, but Ed on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we'll give those comments, um, with Eric, and we'll bring it back at the next set of design.
Chelsea and I have been talking about, um, some ways to, uh, make our staff and office hours a little more accessible for the community. Um, right now, we're answering phones from eight to four-thirty, but our lobby is only open between nine and four. In order to help some of those people who work, uh, like the nine o'clock or eight-thirty shifts, um, we would like to change our admin hours, actually, it would be, all hours would be changed with the exception of the utilities team, who's going to work seven to three-thirty, and then, uh, we will also change our phone and lobby hours to seven-thirty to four if this is approved. So staff will work seven-thirty to four, the phones will be answered from seven-thirty to four, and our lobby will be open from seven-thirty to four.
This is over at Fairway.
Yes, and then the, the, uh, public work staff would also switch to working seven-thirty to four, some are doing eight to four-thirty right now, and some are working seven to three-thirty. The pool is different because there's, it depends on what time they need to have the pool open, so they'll, they'll staff appropriately to make sure that they're open by the time they need to be. But that'll be everyone but the pool and the utility staff.
Looked like the predominance of your contact was early.
Yeah, it is, I, I, this was right up through last Thursday, so this date is as of last Thursday.
Here, here's just a, uh, uh, just food for thought, or just for discussion. Is it possible that we have one day a week where we're open later? I know we're accommodating the early, but a lot of people don't get off work till five o'clock. Um, and if they've got an issue, they either have to come in early or take time off from work. Can staff, doesn't need, we don't need to action anything necessarily today, but can staff just consider maybe one day a week, uh, where we might open later, um, on a, you know, limited staff, um, ability, let's say five-thirty, and we, we accommodate somebody's hours on that date.
And, and, and by that you mean probably the reception?
Yeah, it's just reception, reception, customer service, you know, maybe two people, that's all I'm talking about. And, and on those days, they would work from ten to five-thirty or, or whatever, um, so they wouldn't have to, uh, accumulate overtime or work, um, an agreed amount of hours on that day. I think if anything, maybe just for a trial purpose, and I think if people had issues at work, knowing that there's one day a week they could come in, um, after, you know, four o'clock might be beneficial, specifically maybe after five, so just something to consider, since we're talking about hours.
Go ahead, Chelsea.
Just in the, the data that we have, I mean, the numbers really die off towards the end of the day. But, I mean, it's, it's something we could consider, um.
Why, why don't you do this, why don't you just send a survey or something? Because here's, the, the data's not going to be significant, because we've never been open past four-thirty. Um, so you're, you're not going to have any traffic data of people wanting to come in, you know, after that. Um, and we've been doing this way for years, and people have made it work, so maybe it's not a big deal, I just think while we're talking about hours, let's be diligent and just see if there's another window that we could offer a service, and like I said, I would start one day a week, or even just talk about it, do a survey, let staff just, you know, chew on it.
Yeah, that, no, and, and that's just Laura and I bantering back and forth right now, you know, thinking of utility, you know, when bills are due, maybe that's the week that it makes sense to do a late, a late hour, you know, let us, let us talk with staff.
Yeah, yeah.
To have a late day, but, um, I think this, Laura and I both agree that this would provide a better service to the community by having hours worked, our hours lobby open, phones answered.
If we're here, we're available.
Yeah, and so this, if, if approved, um, would not take into effect until the first of the month, November, November first, or whatever, that first Monday.
I motion to approve.
So we have a motion and a second on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, and then maybe come back in four months and tell us how it's working.
Absolutely, we'll continue to track the data.
I think this is pretty telling right here, if we don't have any early risers, if we don't have any late goers.
Well, the, the lobby doesn't open until nine o'clock right now.
So that's why.
So we can come in, yeah, we'll have, we'll have earlier lobby hours now, so we'll see what kind of.
Because that's a drastic change there, eight, three to nine.
Right, well, that's because nine o'clock is the first time that anyone comes in. All right, thank you.
Now the fun part.
As long as you don't call it fun part.
I know.
Freudian slip, for the record, it's parked.
All right, Laura's gonna pull them up.
Okay, thank you.
Here we go again.
Oh, much better.
Oh, it's much still hard to read.
We can get these printed for you guys if you want them larger pictures, so, um, and I apologize, when you get things from engineers, it's, it's tough, tough to read, so. Uh, B is the one that I believe, um, Prac. I believe this is the one, I'd have to find out from Daniel. So, let me just kind of generally go over this with you all, so, Holm, Holmontes is who did this, um, updated rendition of the two thousand seventeen plan. Um, as you can see, the, uh, admin building and the parking lot in front of it was incorporated, we did have Tetra Tech send them the CAD file, so he was able to incorporate that. Um, the, their general thought, which, is Bill online, can you see if Bill, Bill or Rick is online?
Yes, I'm here.
Wrong Bill, sorry. Nope, he's not, okay, so, so, in the top, so in the top you have court sports, so, um, pickleball, tennis, um, bocce, basketball, um, and, and the point of this is to keep all your court sports together. Um, and that would have, uh, like Ed mentioned earlier, it would have kind of like a restroom, a small restroom facility, water bottle, water bottle filling station, et cetera.
Where would that be?
The top.
Um, I believe.
Right, right front of the tennis court?
No, I don't think it's.
Well, they're all racket courts.
I don't think it's there.
It's called Court Plaza with restrooms, which is the, the basketball, kind of to the left.
Yeah, that's what I thought, right there.
The racket sports would be up in that corner.
Yes, so it's essentially court sports is in this corner.
Yeah.
Um, you have the entrance to the trail, um, here. You've got, and, and please notice that there is a lot of open space still, the, this is a park. We want open space at a park, good usable space, I think Doug's mentioned in the past, you know, it's, it's nice to have just some clean grass to go out and throw a blanket down, or whatever that may be. Um, we've got, and, and with Prac too, and, and with staff, it makes sense to essentially move all of our, our amenities like that we've got at the fun park, the beach volleyball court, the basketball court, move that up here, so you have one central location of your parks and rec amenities. Um, you'll, one thing that's new, um, Randy actually, when he was looking around at other places on the other coast, he saw, um, kind of like a fishing pier or observation deck that other, um, entities have incorporated. Um, so that could be something that, that's new, that wasn't on the two thousand seventeen plan, that I thought would be interesting.
Like sailboat racing and those kind of things.
It, whatever the board, so if, if you wanted to strictly as an observation, you could have an observation, fishing.
I believe that was something that the residents had expressed as an interest.
Yeah, but that, would that require an amendment under permit?
We'd, I'd have to follow up.
I believe so, I don't, I don't believe we can have any docs or, or use that pond for any recreation, and so if we do it, I'm fine, but I want to make sure.
You're talking South Florida Department or Lee County DO?
Well, a DO is going to be required regardless.
Southwest Florida, because I think that was the same issue that we had on Pond Ninety, which, on that note, I don't think we ever did that with those buoys.
If it's not prohibited, then, then we can talk, we can discuss it staff.
Well, we would have to go to South Florida for permits anyway, as part of this.
Your, your biggest issue is that, uh, to go into that lawn area, which would be to, to, to people of all ages, uh, especially with th- those with ADA type issues, and it's a long way from the parking lot.
Well, and there's, I mean, you have path, you have pathways throughout, you've got, um, this, the food truck court closest to the entrance. Um, we can call it that, we can call it parking lot, it just, it wouldn't have the curb stops that you have in your parking, like, in your, in your typical parking lot. That way the trucks could pull through.
Well, if you have events, it's, it's the food park or the food court is close to where you want it.
Yeah.
But it creates a problem with the parking and getting people into that area.
Well, we, I mean, we'd have to meet all of the ADA requirements, but.
Everybody will come in and rock.
No, they're not, they'd get arrested for driving on gateway boulevard.
So, additionally, um, the splash pad, the splash pad is intended to be in the existing configuration of the pool. We could expand it if needed depending on the splash pad, um, selections, which Prac has seen a couple different options. Um, playground area, community gardens, um, a, a gymnasium. Um, we've got some bocce courts, um, again, trying to consolidate all of our parks and rec amenities. So, uh, this is a schematic, this is not design, uh, this is really to get your input, and if, if you're good with this, then we would move forward, um, in negotiating the price with Tetra Tech, with Holmontes as a sub, um, for this park plan design of phase one only.
I think before we go much further, we better start getting some very, very preliminary pricing.
So I'm glad you said that, um, that is really what, uh, we spent a lot of our time this summer doing. Got some pricing, we've met with multiple vent, three different vendors for playground equipment. We've met with two different vendors for splash pad equipment. We've gotten some pricing on some pickleball courts, I know Rick, um, with Holmontes has done, um, some tennis courts and pickleball courts and Spanish wells in Bonita, so he, he was able to provide us some pricing, some recent pricing. Um, but you, you have to go through with design, you have to go through with permitting, uh, you've got it, you've got some site work that would need to be done, but, um, phase one, again, we've mentioned this in the past, would, we're trying to hit those, those three different age groups. So ultimately, we're, we would look at playground area, outdoor fitness court, and then some pickleball courts. And, and this doesn't all have to be built at one time, um, and.
Where are you looking at the outdoor fitness court?
And then, and then the amphitheater that.
The amphitheater has not been included in phase one.
Where were you looking at the outdoor fitness court? Am I missing that on here or someplace?
It could, it could be up here in these court sports, or it could be in this playground area.
It's not a good idea.
So. So where it says pickleball and all that sort of stuff, that doesn't mean that the courts have been designed, that's just a square that says it'll go approximately there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I would like to suggest that you put your, uh, your court sport, your pickleball and your tennis closest to the parking, and put your, um, basketball and whatever first away from the parking.
Okay.
Based on the ability of people to.
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
Basketball's gonna be young people, a lot of them.
Yes, right.
So, a couple things, uh, just to mention, one, uh, there's, one, it says pickleball, and it says two, does that mean that's two courts?
Where, where are you at? Yes.
Uh, just the first, the first square says pickleball two, so that means it's two courts.
Four pickleball courts can fit within one tennis court. And so that's why we wanted to make those multipurpose, um.
Okay, well, hold on, hold on just a sec, just answer the question, so, uh, and I don't mean that rudely. So it says pickleball two, so does that mean that's two?
Pickleball.
Two pickleball, yeah. I will tell you, um, in Stony Brook, we've got multi-use tennis and pickleball, it creates issues. Um, and it's really not conducive, I, so I would say, let's have two dedicated tennis courts, and then however many pickleball we want, and not try to multi-use, um, just because it's, it, it sounds great in theory, but the application process of it, it's just, it's not great, and you can probably get some other feedback of other communities that do it, maybe I'm wrong, maybe Stony Brook's an exception, which wouldn't shock me, but, um, that's, that's what I've seen, and I have no problem with moving it around, I think, you know, pickleball is, is multi-generational, so pushing it closer to the parking, I, I think that's fine. The beach volleyball, I think i- it's on here probably is just, um, you know, something that, to consider, but I will tell you, um, volleyball courts are just not leveraged. Um, they're very cost, they're cost efficient, because it doesn't require a lot, but I tell you, it's just, from what I've seen at the fun park, and the beach ball, volleyball here in Stony Brook, and in other communities, it's just not leveraged. So we may want to consider, it, this may not even be a phase one project, um, I'd much rather have the open space and reconsider that for something else. That's just me personally, unless we've got a group that comes up that says, hey, we, we'll be there every weekend, it's just not an area that's used. The last thing I'll say is, um, if we're thinking about the, let's call it the, the band stage slash amphitheater area, a good location for me, I think, would be, um, right where you, if you're coming off the food truck area, maybe right there. Might be, uh, might be a nice spot, uh, that way you don't have to walk too far, or, because if you go down towards the bottom, which is actually where the amphitheater design has always been in previous mockups, uh, where the fishing pier is, I mean, that, you know, could be an option, but just my personal preference would be to put it closer to, uh, uh, to that area, that way you got electrical and things of that nature.
Okay, I'm just confused, I thought we were pulling the fitness stuff out, phase one.
No.
Okay, just recap me, what was Prac's recommendation for phase one? Because I know it changed from the first time to the seventeenth, and I want to make sure we were very clear on the last meeting that they have on the seventeen. What is it they, they believe the community need for phase one?
We spoke and discussed, I'd, I'd have to go back and list the minutes, that's, that's since then, but the conversation was the three main things, pickleball courts, playground, and outdoor fitness. They discussed in length about an amphitheater, that they wanted it, but it was never mentioned, it was at phase one.
Yeah, so that Future Rec Center and Gym, is that the outdoor?
It's the outdoor fitness.
No, the outdoor fitness is not called out on here.
Okay, it'll be somewhere, and I know we've had discussion on that, that's another area too, we just need to make sure that it makes sense for the cost, that it's going to hit the, uh, the, it's multi-demographic, so it's, it can be used by multiple, multiple individuals, and that it's something that is going to be used.
Okay, um, I am directionally challenged, so, which way would the pickleball courts go, are they north-south or east-west?
North or south.
North-south, okay.
And there's a whole reason behind that with the sun, and.
Right.
Yeah.
And, is it lit?
You, that's up to you.
Before we go, like, just.
Well, because if you want the pickleball courts to be used in the summertime, you're going to have to put on lights, because a lot of them play very early in the morning, when it's still dark, because it's cooler, or after the sun goes down at night, and that's, you know, eight or nine o'clock at night, they'll be out there playing pickleball.
So, will, would be when we get into design, this is just the layout of the parcel.
Okay.
Do we like, and, and it sounds like I'm hearing that beach, the beach volleyball should come out, and maybe something else put back in its place, if it's the outdoor fitness, or if it's some other, some other.
Yeah, or just leave it open for phase one, just.
I, I will say this again, I, my recollection was the, I'll call the band shelf, that was there from May's meeting. And I believe on the, on the seventeenth, you mentioned to the Prac that you pulled it out.
I did.
Okay, so it was there from, I, it was there from day one, staff pulled it out, and then they made note that on the seventeenth, and then Prac says, we understand, we understand that you pulled it out, but that was our intention from day one. And they made a motion that that's where they wanted to go, I mean, for, you know, we can, we can decide to go against what Prac's recommendation was, but I want to make sure it's clear, because Ed's no longer here, that was their number one recommendation.
Well, and they've said it again tonight, they reinforce.
But what she's saying is, it's not going to be on phase one.
That's our.
Well, that's our, we decide that, we decide that.
So, and let me be clear, why, why I recommended the amphitheater come out, because I've seen elsewhere where a trailer band shelf gets pulled in, and then you have a multipurpose band shelf that can be moved from the soccer complex to here, and you don't have a physical structure that you have to maintain. That's why I recommended we remove it, on part of it being a contentious topic in the, from what I understood to be the two thousand seventeen survey. But Prac recommended it go back in, and it's up, the, the phase one is up for your discussion and consideration, and really, this, this, the scheme here, do you like how this is laid out?
Yeah.
I've got some feedback.
I do, yeah.
I got feedback from you all that we want to move, move some items, you know, tweak it, I can give that feedback to Holmontes, but phase one is what I, I really need to hear from you all, because then I'll go and work with Tetra Tech and Holmontes on a scope and price to bring back for you all for future.
I like what was offered for, for phase one, and as Doug said, all age groups, but I would like to see the band shelf go back in.
And, and, and I will, I will agree with Bob, and I agree with Ed, we're not looking for an structural building, something very expensive, something, you know, and then, I don't know, do you think we need a, a possible sidewalk between, uh, between the existing pool deck and the food truck court? Because that would eliminate the walk.
I don't think they're showing those right now on the, on the schematic, you know, but yes, they do need.
I think that'll make it really.
Yeah, I think the more sidewalk, the better, to be quite honest, whether it's, just because it's, when you're walking through a park that's got a well-established in a navigation system, it's really nice.
You, you don't want people walking through a parking lot, you want to get them to a sidewalk as quick as you can.
And you don't want them, you know, honestly, you want to direct the traffic, so, you know, you're eliminating, um, un, unneeded foot traffic on your grass and other areas, so, and plus, you, you know, I think, one of the things I think we're going to. So, and plus, you know, I think, one of the things I think we're gonna, we're gonna see more traffic in this park with people just coming to walk, walk around the park, they take different routes, get some exercise, have their, you know, their, their kids or whoever. So, but that's semantics and we could talk about all that, but.
It's a start.
I want to mention that you all have recommended three things that span the entire length of this parcel. So site work is going to be required of the entire parcel and not just a small section area for phase one. I just want to make, I just.
Increases the cost.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Make mention of that. And, and we can do that because I mean, eventually it's gonna have to be done if you do it in future phases, but we're spanning the whole parcel. So phase one might be more costly with site development items than actual improvements.
Right, usually happens. But that, that's not surprising.
Okay.
All right. So what I'm hearing, let me just rea- recap. We've got playground. We've got outdoor fitness. We've got court sports. Now, my court, my specific question with court sports, do we just want to do pickleball or do we want to do all of the court sports at one time?
Just pickleball.
Pickleball's a lot cheaper than tennis.
I think if it was me, I would do the pickleball complex first and tennis would be a phase, a phase two.
Okay.
Cause I can guarantee the pickleball courts would get, will get used.
The demand.
Okay. And then amphitheater.
Okay, I have one question. So we're not doing the basketball at all on this face because I know, I guess the conversation that also happened on Prac was that the existing one that still needs repair, they decided to save the money, not repair it because we're gonna put it here. And I believe the understanding of the Prac committees, let's not spend any money at the fun park because it's going to be here.
Yeah.
So you're saying the basketball is not gonna be on phase one?
I would include it in phase one. It's, but, courts, those courts aren't, aren't that expensive to build.
So pickleball and a basketball were courts.
Yeah. At least just price them out. And, and I think when, the, the design will have to be shifted a little bit if we're saying we're gonna phase two tennis and we want to pull forward the pickleball. Cause I think ultimately what do we want, like, let's see, there's anywhere from, I think probably four to, or six to eight. If I was gonna invest, I'd probably invest in pickleball. And then, you know, you can put basketball and then tennis courts will be phase two.
Okay.
And then the rec, I think the rec area, uh, the reason why that was phase one is because we had that, that grant, we were looking at it. I would, I'm on the fence to determine whether the fitness is truly a phase one or phase two or if it's, you know, there, it's a phase one that we could always add on to. Um, so that's one that I, I would want staff to do a little bit more diving in.
How we do that as kind of the low priority of phase one?
Yeah, like define the space, maybe put a couple of things in there that, you know, it can be used by multiple ages. Cause the biggest thing there is if it's not covered, it's not gonna get used. Okay, it's just too hot to stand out there and, and workout and, and sweat, or at least it's only gonna be used by younger folks. Anyone over probably twenty-five or thirty, uh, would be hard for us to use it.
In, in looking at the layout proposed, I think I'm counting ten pickleball.
You're correct.
And, uh, we have, you know, five thousand residents, more or less, homes. Pelican's got twelve pickleball courts for twenty-five hundred and they're used. I'll just, this is not overly ambitious. It's a great start, totally support it, but we're not overbuilding but all, but all.
All right.
Does the board want to consider pulling the, the outdoor, uh?
Outdoor fitness court.
Yeah. I'm on the fence on that one too, cause I just think it's so hot.
Why don't we see some writing?
Okay.
If, if that pushes us over budget, then it's phase two.
That's, that's, okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So, but, so generally this layout, other than the two, two or three comments that were made of removing the beach volleyball courts and then shifting the basketball towards the palesment and pushing pickleball closer.
Front, yes.
We're good.
Yeah, yeah.
The fitness is going to go where though?
Where, here?
No, no.
That's rec. That's a gym.
In the playground area.
Yeah.
Fitness is going in the playground area?
Close to it. It would, it would. Well, let me find out from Bill to make sure that's where he'd be, he was thinking.
Cause that beach volleyball, as far as I'm concerned, is just a waste.
Yeah, I agree with it. A hundred percent.
Or we leave that as open space.
I think there's other items that it's getting, that's gonna get more use than the fitness area. I love the idea at first, um, and that CrossFit type stuff is, is popular, but I think if we were to invest, there's other areas that would get more, just more usage, to be quite honest.
And you, if we just need more detail.
Yep.
And see what it's gonna cost.
So I will go and work with Tetra Tech and Holmontes on scope and price for three, four items, playground, pickleball, basketball, amphitheater with an optional outdoor fitness court.
Yeah.
And are, are the bocce courts in that group too?
They are, they are not.
Okay, um, that's becoming more and more popular and I heard, oh, who wants to play that? But, um, now that they've got them at Pelican, I'm telling you, every time I, I look over there, somebody's over there on those bocce courts.
We've got some courts over here if you want to come play.
Really?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
So that's.
Hey, uh, Chelsea, one thing, as, as you're looking through this, um, one of the, one of the things that we just don't have, like over in the soccer area is just little small cover, covered gazebos or pavilions. So if we can make sure that we've got, you know, an adequate amount of places for people just to sit in covered areas, I don't mean big pavilions, I mean just like, you know, Ed, like the butterfly garden, like just gazebos where you can go and, and sit in the shade.
Little trellis.
What is that?
A little trellis over an area.
Yeah, just, you know, the more kind of covered areas just, it's, you know, um, sparse throughout the park, I think is just a really good idea.
Okay. Okay. We'll incorporate a couple of those in the first, uh, phase.
Thank you. This looks really good though.
I agree.
It's a start.
All right.
Oh, can you get us copies of this of the week?
You want hard, you want printed copies?
Printed copy, please.
We will have those, uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
Three hole punches per fall.
Laura didn't like.
I'm glad, I'm glad that other people had the problem because I thought it was me.
I.
I couldn't read that at all.
All right, so district manager items?
Uh, yep, we got monthly reports and first one's admin. Anything for Laura? For Laura, anything?
Um, just so the board knows, uh, Lauren and I have met a couple of times and I've asked her to look at and put together sort of like a template that we could have, um, at least once a month at our meetings, a financial condition of the district, but like on one sheet of paper. So.
Instead of two hundred?
Instead of two hundred pages of statements.
It's a summary of the, of, of all of the, the month. It has a year versus last year at that time and then year-to-date versus last year. It's, it's very similar to what I prepared for the subcommittees, but I did it for Gateway as a whole.
The one we got is overwhelming. It's just way too much.
And because statements are really just a picture of that month at one time, if you don't follow the trends from statement to statement to statement, they really don't mean anything after thirty days when you get the next statement. So this, I was hoping that we would more look at, um, instead of looking the, at the individual trees, like line items, we get a picture of the whole forest. So all of CDD, where is our money going and are we in financially good shape? And then I was hoping that Laura could also be our sort of eyes and ears on this thing and it, when she sees a trend developing or something like that, let us know, sort of taking on a, a bit of a financial advisor type role, uh, for the board so that she would, she would spot these things first and then let us know about them.
She's a bird dog on that.
So give us, give us a warning.
I'm gonna tell you that.
Warning of a problem.
You just described what she's been doing.
Yeah, but looking at the CDD as a whole, not just this budget item or that budget item or this group or whatever, but our whole.
Got you.
Our whole company. But on one sheet of paper.
And so I'll, I'll present that next month with the financials for October and I am completely open to formatting changes. If you'd like to see it presented differently, uh, we can discuss it, we can discuss it then, but expect to see it in the second meeting in November with the October financials.
And if you have any ideas, let her know.
Yeah, if there's anything in particular you'd like to see, let me know and I can see if I can incorporate it on there.
I do have one question. So looking at the contracts, did we receive everything for the asphalt restoration?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
But, but we have, for, you were talking about Stony Brook?
Yes.
We, um, I know Randy sent an email today to the owner of the, um, or the project manager from the company and said, hey, we need all these items by a time and date certain to make the next agenda. So we're still waiting on a couple of items.
I don't want to delay anything for them. I don't have anything else for me?
Next.
One question, the syn tests, we're gonna give uniforms now instead of shirts? Is that what we're proposing?
Yes, we're working to uniforms. Um, that'll be a, we believe a cost savings to the district.
This, um, for fiscal twenty-three, sorry, which we just finished, um, we had purchased like pants and shirts for the employees and so in order to save money, we're gonna go to the uniforms, which will be nice because if they get wrecked and they get, it's all, the repairs are all included in part of it, so we don't have to pay for, to replace things.
All right, pretty good.
All right, next we've got, uh, public works.
Daniel is on mine.
Any questions for Daniel?
I didn't have any.
All right, on to utilities. Any question for Mr. Shaw? Any questions for Mr. Shaw?
I didn't have any.
You're left speechless.
Is there anything you want to give us an update on?
On the valve exercising and the hydrant flushing in Prado and Pistoia, is that a root? Do you use that quarterly, semi-annually or?
Um, we're working toward doing it annually for the entirety of Gateway.
Okay, well, the way it was specifically spelled out in, in honorable order.
But we, we did it because there was a, some, a question that came up on the water over there with a, with a resident and it happened to be on the, in the resident's, uh, filtering system. But just as precautionary, we went over and, you know, double-checked to make sure something, something didn't get closed, uh, and did flushing, you know, in the.
I, I hear a lot of comments about water in Pelican. Rarely is it ever on Gateway. Bottom of City of Port Myers, so whatever we're doing is work. It is relatively new.
Yeah.
And I understand that, but.
Anything else from Phil? All right, thank you.
Good.
Nothing else?
I, I, I sort of missed the sequence last time.
Hold on. You're not, I, I got, I got a couple of updates, you have them.
Okay.
Nancy mentioned earlier that, uh, we did meet with the HOA, Pelican Preserve HOA, trying to come to terms with them, to, to new terms with them, um, on a new agreement. As you know, we have the existing O and M agreement, which at your last board meeting, you ratified, uh, the removal of all of the items out of exhibit B, which essentially leaves a agreement in place, but nothing really to, nothing, yeah, nothing really to agree upon. So, um, I'm hoping and, and, um, Laura and I have, uh, op, we're optimistic that we can come to terms with the HOA, um, but as you know, we'll have to either mutually cancel or, um, unilaterally send a cancellation notice to Pelican for the existing O and M, um, as we try to implement this new agreement.
So Mike, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead first, cause it.
No, go ahead.
All right. So if we do cancel, it's, it's really not cancel anything because exhibit D was removed?
Yeah. So I believe it's a nine, sixty or nine, ninety day notice, Tony?
It's ninety days. Once the notice is provided, it's effective ninety days after it's received, uh, by the association, district can terminate it at any time, with or without cause. And again, the termination of the agreement is then effective ninety days after the association receives that termination notice.
And has this been discussed between the staff and Pelican and what is their?
So we haven't, the only thing we've discussed is Tony has drafted a mutual termination agreement, which I haven't heard, had any feedback from, um, the HOA. I don't know if they've sent it to their attorney, but, um, I know we've been focusing our efforts on trying to get this new agreement in place, um, but if that new agreement gets in place, we need to cancel the old one. So, albeit through notification with the ninety day notice or a mutual termination.
And functionally, functionally, landscaping, security and pond, nothing will change.
Yeah.
Everything is now handled within the subsystem. It's budgeted, it's being managed. It used to be part of the O and M, now it's not. That one aspect of it.
And if it's a, sorry, last one. And if it is a mutual cancellation, do we have to wait the ninety days or, or no? Cause I don't want to delay us approving a new agreement if some, you know, somehow they were able to work that out sooner than what we expect. I don't want to delay on cancel the old one because we need to do that to go ahead with the new one.
Well, if it would be, it could be either simultaneous, the termination of existing and then entering to the new service provider agreement, or include in the new service provider agreement would be service provider agreement and termination of the O and M agreement, that could be one document, or you could terminate the existing agreement now and it's effective ninety days after they receive it. So you have a, a number of options. Again, have we set that up, what, a month or two ago, I think, mutual termination?
The mutual termination, yeah.
Yeah.
After our last meeting, when we, um, basically X'd out a whole bunch of stuff from the O and M agreement because it didn't conform anymore to the way, uh, we've budgeted and the way our operations are and the way everything is going on, um, I, I really think that we need to cancel the O and M agreement because in his former life, my husband, John, was an estate planning attorney. And whenever people would come in for consultation and he would say, okay, here's your trust and, you know, it has all this stuff in it and X, Y and Z, but it's only paper unless you actually title the house into it, you actually title the other property, you actually titled the boat into it. It's, it's a stack of paper unless it means something and it has something in it. Well, right now the O and M agreement doesn't have anything in it. So I'm prepared to make a motion to cancel the O and M agreement today. And so I will move that the district manager and the district council prepare and send to the Pelican Preserve Community Association, Inc., which is called PPCA, a written notice of termination of the community development district systems and oper, and facilities operation and maintenance agreement dated March first, two thousand and seventeen as amended, and this is called the O and M agreement pursuant to paragraph eleven point B, as in boy, of the O and M agreement, terminating the O and M agreement effective Pursuant to paragraph 11 point B, as in boy, of the O and M agreement. Terminating the O and M agreement effective 90 days after receipt by the PPCA of the written notice of termination. It doesn't mean anything right now, what the, the words that are in the O and M agreement. Let's put it aside, let's end it, and let's move forward and negotiate a new agreement. Take a clean sheet of white paper and start all over again. And I think these talks that they've had are leading up to a new agreement anyway. So let's put the past behind us and let's move forward.
Does this eliminate any options that we might wish we hadn't eliminated?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, I would suggest that if there's going to be any discussion, first to see if there's a second in the motion.
Okay, so do we have a second for discussion?
I'll say it for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Think, I didn't mean to interrupt you. The question was again.
Does this take away any options that we might wish later that we hadn't, that taken away?
I'm not trying, I'm trying to understand what options we have right now. Again, as Carol mentioned, the, under the agreement, there's an exhibit that was a description of the district's systems and facilities. There was a provision in language in the agreement that said the district had the right to modify, delete, or add to that list of district systems and facilities. And that became effective upon delivering an appendix to PPCA. That appendix, which deleted all of the district systems and facilities from Exhibit B, was delivered a few weeks ago, maybe? Or four, about a month ago? And the board, you know, ratified that, so in effect, there are no.
And we ratified it in our last meeting.
There are no district systems or facilities to be operated or maintained or administered by PPCA at the present time. So I think that's where Carol's.
Okay, I, I personally tend to disagree with that interpretation, and I know what you said about the disagreement. But we have not resolved the irrigation, which used to be part of it. So the irrigation is still provided on district assets through PPCA and through the golf club. And that used to be a line in the old appendix, and I don't think we pay anything for it, but that's a whole other issue. But it's, it's still there. I, I'm not opposed to where Carol's going, and normally I'm trying to get this to move quickly. But in this particular case, I'm satisfied with the pace of the negotiations. I don't want, that, that, it just sounds harsh to me, just me. And I don't want it to be misinterpreted because we've got a good relationship with them, my nickel. So I would like to give them another month to get it done. If it's not done in by November, I'm all about it.
So I have a question for, for, for staff, Bob or Carol. By terminating the agreement, what impact does that cause? Under current conditions?
From a functional, and you correct me if I'm wrong, from a functional condition of landscaping, security and safety, nothing. But there is a, a part where we're paying for O and M services to castle management. I think we agreed on KW.
We're paying the community association.
Paying the community for the things that they're doing on our behalf. So right now, that's in the O and M. The amount of, amount has been reduced from 93 to 60.
There's no amount in the O and M agreement, the, the O and M agreement states that the amount to be supplied in the end.
Understand that, I'm, I'm, I understand it completely. But the fact remains, it's in that whole umbrella of O and M. And as we go forward, I want to make sure everybody's comfortable and clear with it.
So can I make a, so can I make a recommendation is this should be an iterative process? Why don't we, if we're gonna, instead of dissolving the full O and M agreement today. Why don't we propose an amendment to strike or to pull all non-functioning components of that O and M agreement out?
We did.
We already did that.
That's been done.
And we voted at it, on it at the last meeting, we all voted for it.
Doug, the only thing that canceling the O and M agreement today will do was start a time clock for 90 days.
Okay, well, why don't we put that time clock, say that this agreement has to be. The amended version or new version of the service agreement has to be complete within 90 days or the existing agreement will be terminated.
I could.
Hold on, Johnny, go ahead.
No, the existing agreement provides for the method of termination, and a termination doesn't have that caveat. It says it's effective 90 days after receipt by PPCA. So the clock would start and whether, and then the district could arguably withdraw that, or maybe. But that kind of caveat or condition, I'm thinking Doug, would not be in line with what's in the agreement.
Or, or maybe it's, maybe we reverse engineered a little bit. We agreed to terminate the agreement effective in 90 days, which would give staff time to draft a new agreement.
But that's exactly what it is, that's exactly what Tony's saying.
Okay, I didn't hear that, but okay.
Yeah, okay, I didn't hear that either.
Okay, so we're clear, so we have a motion?
Because it says terminating the O and M agreement effective 90 days after receipt.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, Carol, I didn't hear that.
Terminated for 90 days.
It's terminated, but the termination is effective 90 days after they receive it.
Okay.
Yes.
So that gives them 90 days to come up with the service agreement.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we've got a stake in the ground, okay. I, I could support.
Alright, so we have a motion and we have a second, all in favor?
Before we go to, since it's a new item, I think if you can open up to the public for any comment that they may have.
So does anybody like to have a comment on this topic? Online, if you want to have a comment, please come to the podium.
Sorry, Nancy Straw, I just wanted to get clarification, so the mutual termination agreement?
It would go away.
Would go away, and this would be the official 90 day notice?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, I, we're so close, I mean, that seems reasonable.
Okay, thank you Nancy.
And it would be great if everything could be done by 90 days.
Might even be done before that, 45, 34.
30 would be even better.
Now under a clock.
Well, we'll be under a clock when it's.
We'll be up. So there was motion.
Alright, so there's a motion and there was a second, all in favor? Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
So Tony, you'll draft that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want this to go to the?
And just as an FYI, we are starting planning for Winterfest. Our Parks and Rec staff and Public Works staff are starting to put together plans. If you have any ideas, please let us know. Of course, once we, it, it's typically the first, I think, Saturday in December. But once we iron out the details, we'll be sure to pass along the information, and I'm sure we'll be asking for your participation in one way or another. I believe that Saturday is December 1st, which is also my birthday, so I will not be here. I will not be celebrating Winterfest with you all.
I don't recall you at the last one.
No, she wasn't at the last one.
She was there, but you weren't.
No, the last party we had, July 4th.
Oh, yeah.
When it was hard in the dickens.
Yeah, I thought you were going to do the dunk tank, and you never did.
We'll get them at Winterfest.
Okay.
Is this something that we talked about previous years that we kind of missed on inviting Pelican Preserve to this event?
We, we actually have really good communication with the community association now to the, both, both directions, like Nancy mentioned. And so we do send it out to the president's council and to their, their.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Last year's Christmas got to Pelican.
They got it, but I think the previous years we didn't, so I just want to make sure we don't forget.
We're on the.
Can, I'd like to recommend that we do something really fun this year and have communities submit. Like, I think we should do like a chili cook-off or something like that, and, and it represent the different communities.
I know staff had mentioned an idea of maybe wreaths, having each community decorate a wreath that represents their community, and maybe have them up for display.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, like, food is always a good thing, people get hungry at it. You know what I mean? I, run it by staff, and I, I think a chili cook-off or something would be really cool.
Alright, we'll mention that to staff and see. We'll see.
Fancy, I like that.
In Pelican around the pool, once a year, we have something that I call floatable boatable. And all the communities in our community, they could get together teams. The, the premise is everybody starts with the same items to build a boat. Got plastic, they got cardboard, they got tape, everybody has the same thing. So you've got to make a boat that will hold a person and let them paddle across the pool.
There you go.
Talk about fun.
Yeah, but are we, are we doing this at the soccer field?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the problem.
I think, when we do our, hey, look, Bob, when we, when we do our grand opening for the, for the new park, the Commons Park, we should absolutely do that. Because I've seen that and it's hilarious.
Or, or use the Sherman Pond.
Yeah, oh, no, then we have to fish it out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Chelsea. Alright, any other questions for Chelsea? District Attorney?
Just a number of items, on the Stony Brook Road ownership transfer discussion, I've had conversations with Katie Berkey, the attorney for the association with Becca Polikoff. We've exchanged emails about her sending me some documents, me looking for and sending her documents. It's been very productive, it just sometimes takes a little more time than we want to. We also talked about having, and I talked to Charles Mann briefly, I was talking to Charles about the straggler parcel deeds earlier this week. And he also talked about the Stony Brook issues, so Katie Berkey is going to find some available dates, probably like next week. Hopefully, we could have a meeting, Charles Mann, myself and her, and to the extent Joe Adams with the county attorney's office is available and possible to attend also. So we're moving along, it's not as fast as any, you know, not everyone wants, but we're trying to noodle through and come up with some solutions to make it a lot easier. And on the, so we already talked about 13B, I didn't, because I got out of sync on my, my, my task reports, I provided one last board meeting. I'll just give you a verbal update, and we'll have the written one the next time. On the deeds to the districts, as I mentioned, I had a conversation with Charles Mann earlier this week, and I received an email, I think today. With a whole bunch of other documents and materials with the idea of, again, still November 2nd. Have the additional straggler parcels conveyed to the district and accepted. So that's still on track, that was in my prior report.
The stragglers?
Yes, and staff picked up on some additional ones, Charles' office also picked up some additional ones, and I kind of scout, re-scouted their list. You know, little pieces here and there. And, and so hopefully this will take care of it.
Do you, sorry Tony, do you recall how many were we talking about?
I think it's almost a dozen now.
Twelve? Yeah, I think we've done at least a dozen.
I didn't look at, I did not look.
A dozen parcels?
I did not look at the email today that I received.
I will tell you right now.
In transition.
Some of these lake related?
Yes.
And my, what's it?
Yes, they're like portions of lakes because, do you recall?
Twenty-six, twenty-six?
Yeah, you call some of them, the way they're.
Like over at where I live.
It's like a half a lake, a third of a lake.
With half bonding to them and half.
Or thirds, or quarters.
Like a random little piece between something. So twenty-six prior to, to?
Well, I think some, I just counted the Excel sheet, I think some of those include turnover from like Prado and, and those that are outstanding still.
Yeah, and I've, and I've reviewed, well, he had a prior package, which is about 10 parcels, 10 or 11 or 12. I reviewed all those, I had no problems with any of them, except for one, and they were going to get updated title reports for a couple. So it, it's definitely doable for the November 2nd board meeting, to get all those squared away. On the, Stephen mentioned that as far as the financing, I've reviewed the engineer's report, it was called supplemental, I revised the name, I provided my comments, sort of Pedro Hernandez, bond counsel. Stephen mentioned he's planning on revising that and recirculating it to, to the team. Forline already talked about that. On Pelican Preserve, on the infrastructure easement owner identification, we're zooming in on some, working with Bob and Chelsea and Laura, and also Will Cronin and Reed over at Passarella. We zoomed in on some remaining areas to review for purposes of easements or license agreements or agreements for maintenance with the golf course. On certain areas and with PPCA on others, and possibly some other additional condominium associations. Strips along Pelican Preserve Boulevard and others. And we'll use the easement that we use for like maintenance, landscape maintenance agreement we had with the Vias, the template, to be dealing with all those entities. So we zoomed in on them and I'm in the process of drafting the, I'll call it the easement document, and then we'll get with Will, the Passarella, to finalize the exhibits. And, and send them to the association, but that's, that's, that's been along pretty nicely.
Just to chime in on that, the Villa is completed, Heritage Golf has half of the package, we're getting a second addition to that. Where they're going to take part of our responsibility, and they're going to do it. And then we've got the drawings for Sevillah, Verona, Tiberio, Valentina and Camerel. And when Tony gives us the template language back, we'll meet with those five HOAs. And then the only thing remaining is PPCA, and I'm meeting with them tomorrow, I think Laura's going to be there. And we don't, I don't know of any issues that we have, but we want to just be transparent with it. So I'm, I'm optimistic we're going to get this done this year. I know the original end date was August of 22, but we're really close.
We didn't have all the data then, right?
August of 22.
Well, and along, and along the line of Pelican Reserve matters, one of the, I think I mentioned last time, I had an initial call with Charles Thompson of the Dancic Law Firm, the Varnum Law Firm. With regards to in the future, looking towards having a three-party agreement on the irrigation system. Right now, there's an agreement between the golf course and PPCA as the irrigation. And so the concept was to have a three-party agreement, to have an equitable distribution, a pro rate or share of the cost of operating and maintaining the system. Due to that, it's going to be some good hard data gathering to see, are we talking irrigation mains, what's the cost, irrigation pump houses? And then we have what we call the sprinkler systems, that's how they were defined in the requisitions, which are the actual pop-ups in the lines coming off the mains.
Okay.
On the golf course?
The actual stuff on the ground.
Roadways, roadways and common areas, yeah, outside the golf course. And I gave Bob Gepper last week a banker's box full of construction plans that I had from about 14 different requisitions, 03, 04, 05. That hopefully may also help divine location of these facilities, mainly the mains, may also identify other locations. And we'll find out what PPCA has, we're not sure what they have yet, to try to get, have a, from the 50,000 foot perspective, say, okay. What's being irrigated by what source, what's the consumption, what's the equitable rate of distribution? And then clarifying who owns what actual physical facilities and infrastructure. So that's been started, and that's going to be a long.
Taking, taking baby steps on that, and, and one component of this is I'm going to meet with Ameriscape, because they have a gentleman who's devoted to this. Take one of our large GIS maps and plot out everything that he knows is there. How we can get ownership will be the next thing.
Yeah.
We're at least going to know where we are in the present state.
That's a start.
Yeah, we have some, there are some drawings, plans for irrigation and sprinkler systems, I'll call them, and, and roadways and mediums and cul-de-sacs as part of Cypress Grove and some others. But there's a lot that's lacking as far as what I found.
More gaps than, than country.
Bob, what did you mean when you said ownership?
Well, the district.
We don't want to own it.
We do, we own some of the pipes of that irrigation system that come along our main roadways. And, and I've.
The CDD?
Well, mainly the sprinklers.
Because the district, like the infrastructure, the, the distribution pipes within a community belongs to that community, and the pedestals and all that belongs to the community. But we have some truck lines.
Well, we need to.
Who's saying no?
Well, that's part of the clarification, Bob.
Okay, well.
We think we own truck lines. Yeah, yeah, that's part of the clarification.
Maybe that's a better way to put it.
Yes.
We think we own truck lines.
Well, again, that's part of the clarification, is what was actually conveyed.
Yes.
Yeah.
What do you call it, a bowl of spaghetti?
It is a bowl of spaghetti.
Herden cat.
Everything.
Sprinklers versus irrigation lines.
We're taking our baby steps and we're going to resolve this down here, or next fiscal year, this fiscal.
I think next fiscal year is, yeah.
It'll be as fast as your landscape.
On, on Milner.
So 25, okay.
I was going to say 25.
I'll be out there with a water tanker truck.
October 25, okay.
The, on the Milner contract and the copy machines, sending a letter off to Milner, saying we're not going to pay anymore, and you owe us money back. And I've got the newer invoices, I'm going to say we're not going to pay them, that gets back to the whole issue about contracts not being valid and other issues. I've not even heard response from Milner yet, that's the copy machine company. With regards to Stony Brook Track B14, that's on hold, I understand until we analyze the exotics, that's that big buffer track along Gateway Boulevard.
Staff is, staff is going to be meeting with Land Care to show them exactly the invasives that need to be removed. Yes.
Up here.
Yep, the claw.
And as Stephen mentioned, worked on the FGU Interconnect and the, part in all the agreements with Lee County, that was a good teamwork effort on that, getting all that, all that achieved, because there's a lot of moving parts on that, I know. And easement use policy, staff has revised and sent back to me a proposed final easement use policy. That basically has a template of an easement use agreement, outlines a fill-in-the-blank concept and a policy. I think we ready to bring to the board in November 2nd board meeting, Chelsea.
We're working this year on establishing a lot of SOPs. This is the first that Elle has been able to put together for, to resolve some issues and some problems that she's had for.
You're making her life easier, when people make their applications, they have a better idea of what to submit. And that was, you know, it was a good job, I mean, I reviewed it, we, she got back real quickly with suggested changes. And I just glanced at it, Chelsea, and I think it's about ready to go, and I looked at it, I think it should be ready for the next board meeting, we believe. Ownership of various bridges and car paths, already advised about the four bridges and conservation areas, six of the districts, because that's part of the board management. And also conservation area, and that's pretty much it for now. And I'll be more, I have a floor, sell spreadsheet, proper time. I got out of sync this time, I probably.
I wasn't sure why you were looking at me.
Because someone mentioned to me, Tony, the report that was there was about a month old, and I said, alright, my computer should have been resolved.
Alright, thank you Tony. Alright, so no other questions for Tony? Alright, we'll go ahead with future board business, agenda management?
So just so to note that. People, with P-PAC not having quorum, there were some items that didn't make it through the process, and you heard, we pulled one of them today. And we've got some other items that will be coming in front of you, once it goes through the P-PAC process. As you know, we, we normally schedule a workshop for the first meeting of the month. We had penciled in sunshine law training, but I think we're going to push that off to December. Is there any particular items that you would like to have for the November workshop? So I, I mean, if not, I don't have anything that would warrant a workshop unless you want to do the strategic plan. I can, we've had staff give additional input, and we can bring that and discuss that at the workshop, but it's the only thing I can think of right now.
That would be the, the goal setting part?
All of the goals that we would have.
Has she reported back to us yet?
She has, and staff has put in their input, so we've got a laundry list for the goals.
We might go to sleep if we don't do it and forget what everything we did.
I think that's a good idea.
Probably can be a good idea.
We'll put that on there.
Okay, I have one question about road repair, and it specifically impacts Pelican, is historically, we've either milling grounds, a community road, done nothing. As we move forward, we're considering now, we're going to have a workshop for the safety group that's responsible for this. Talk about the kinds of spot repairs, for lack of a better word, we're going to do. Is that a concern over here at all? Because if it is, then we should do a workshop. Is that a concern over here at all? Because if it is, then we should do a workshop. If not, we'll just keep it.
What do you mean, spot repairs?
Well, where you go from, you take a section of the road. Ninety percent of the road looks great. You have ten percent that looks bad.
Patches?
Well, but you have valley gutter to valley gutter type of patch, not not.
They want to do section, section.
Historically, Pelican has done an all or nothing.
Yeah.
So they're they're, we in Gateway, you know, we do those spot repairs or patch repairs.
So then it doesn't matter over here, okay?
Historically, Pelican, it's like if it's bad, then we do the all or nothing.
It's it's just new for us. We're finally twenty-five years old. We'll need it.
Your time.
Twenty-five years.
Yeah.
With this agenda management, as you can see, we've got quite a few bids that are going to be coming in over the next couple months. Purchases come through. It's our our new fiscal. So is there anything that you see that you'd like to prioritize or reprioritize or add? Is there anything that you'd like to add?
Well, I hate to lose another couple of weeks for the Ventrack swirling for the pressure work because we know we're going to need it. And we've got pricing on it. And unfortunately, P-PAC didn't meet. But the money's, you know, the money is there within their budget, the total budget, fifty-four thousand dollars. I'd like to move on that without.
What is this work to do?
It's a tractor and spray equipment to do sidewalks and things. Pressure wash.
Oh, pressure wash, okay.
I know, but I just want to go.
Because it's a new.
Is this one of those chemical type?
Okay.
No, I think it's just water. I don't think it's going to be chemical. But this is going to be part of what full-time Pelican guy, as it is.
But does it do also curbs?
Yes.
Or valley gutters?
Yes. We can use it for whatever we want.
Um, sorry. Normally, I would be all for rushing it and getting it done. But I mean, we have the agenda item ready and prepped for the next meeting. I mean.
Got to wait six months for it. I just didn't want to wait. It's not something.
I know. The the lead time, I think, was what, do you recall, Daniel, like two months or?
No, it's a lot longer than that.
Yeah.
Some of these trees and things that are dropping, you want to wait about probably another month. And then they're all down or otherwise you might end up doing it. We've had that problem with some of the oaks. They have a.
They just started. They just started.
Just started, yeah. And when they get on the ground, they just ruin everything.
We're good at waiting. I'm trying to get it bought.
You mean August twenty-two?
Listen, if the board wants to move on it and recommend we purchase it, we can do that. But.
I make a motion, we do that.
Second.
Second.
Yeah.
Open it up to.
The public for.
Not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. It's going to be fifty-five.
It'll come from the unassigned reserves?
Yes.
Unassigned funds, I mean.
Unassigned reserves.
Unassigned reserves.
Okay, so before we vote, we'll open to the public. Does anyone like to comment on that online here? Okay, so we have a motion. We have a motion in a second. Thoughts of vote on favor?
Daniel, get it ordered tomorrow.
Don't look at me that way. You're giving me a look. I I just had one thought from the standpoint of the workshop. Some workshop, whether the board wants to do it or not, we, Leslie's worked hard on the interconnect, I mean, on the cross connection policy.
She's not ready to bring that forward.
Okay.
But it's it's part of a globe, a bigger global update.
Okay.
That she's working on.
Didn't, wasn't sure. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are we only having one meeting in November?
December.
December, only one.
Only one meeting in December.
Second and the sixteenth were well before Thanksgiving.
Oh, sixteen. All right, I knew Thanksgiving. I'm sorry.
We're done with, we're done by Thanksgiving.
So is there any additional items that you'd like?
All right, so go ahead with supervisor comments, Carol?
Uh, yes. Back when we were doing the budget, you gave us this nice chart. Is there any way you could update it now?
Yep. Laura's already done it.
And make it all pretty and put names on it and give it to all of us?
We'll have it in the next.
So that.
It'll be at the next board meeting.
So that when I come to an agenda item, I can sometimes just look over here and say, oh, okay, that'd be so-and-so, you know?
Yep.
Thank you.
We we'll we'll email it to you all.
Okay.
I would say I'll have it by the middle of next week. I need else to come back. So I want to make sure it's as current as possible. I'll have it to you within five minutes. It's ninety-nine percent done.
That's fine. Oh, that's my phone. Never mind.
She's buying. Where are we at on irrigation controller systems?
The.
Specifications form to bid it or whatever?
Um, we're working on it.
We just.
We need, we need to get, so I I'll tell you, I'll be frank. I was.
Please.
I want, I'd prefer to wait until the lights go in because the FPL lights, which I'm told are are going to be spring, summer of twenty, of twenty twenty-four. So I I.
Spring, summer of twenty twenty-four?
For the FPL.
One area or all?
All of it.
The whole project?
Wait, completion?
That's what I'm told. That's what I'm told. So.
Our luck and what we're having over there. I can't even get an email returned.
And it's going to freeze in July, too.
So. So my thought was, so right now, from the landscaping side, the priority is drafting the scope for the the Gateway Manscape bid because that's going to have to go out soon. Once that's done, then we can focus on the irrigation because we're going to have to get a landscape architect in to draw the plans.
Here's the downside. As we have found, they're going to be doing a one heck of a lot of directional boring. I would think that we would do it before the electrical would go in so that they'll, that the boring doesn't come back and go through the electrical.
Oh, I was doing the opposite. I was worried about the opposite. FPL drilling through the lines.
That is less expensive than going through the electrical. Uh, ju- well, I just wanted to check to see where we are because we've, we're finishing up over there. We got about another two weeks. And just at the end, we started hitting stuff. We made it through almost three months and was not hitting anything. And now all of a sudden, it seems like every time we put the the machine in the ground, we hit something.
We'll get the ball rolling with the landscape architect and see if we can get one on board and get a scope and price for the design. Because we cannot direct bid, we cannot directly hand a contract over to our landscape vendor because of CCNA.
And you're saying F.
And the landscape architect.
Yeah, depending, yeah.
And you're saying completion at FPL summer next year?
That's that's the last email I read today was when that up, when that.
Is my memory serve me right that he says once we hit the ground, it will take eight months?
I don't recall.
I remember it was an eight month, like when we're ready to go. So that means like started today and then we'll.
Well, for the extent of his work, the direction of polls, that's easy. It's all that wiring that he's got to do.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ed?
No, that's all I have.
Bob?
Uh, two things. First is, have we made any progress on hiring the utility person for Pelican?
Yeah.
Maintenance person?
The maintenance. We, Daniel's working directly with Jen Lewis and the app, any applicants that come in that were decent, he's sending them over to her for their review. But he's a month into the job and we're trying to review and interview as soon as we can.
As of this week, we've sent out four to try to get them to come in. Just wait for emails back from them to.
Okay, thank you.
But in the meantime, Bob, staff are flexing, existing staff are flexing over there to to.
Make sure we got you covered.
Yeah.
No, I don't have any issues. I've just, you know, a follow-up. The second thing is, I've been trying to get the the digital, the records upstairs in the Fibber McGee's closet, digitized.
The hot box.
Whatever you call it, the digitized. And Tony ducked under the table, but come back up so I can send one your way.
I'm getting my helmet.
Like to get your records because you're you're known, it could come up with boxes.
He's got everything.
I know. He's got it back to Noah's Ark. We'd like to get yours related to the district also, particularly Pelican Preserve.
Oh, yeah. Chelsea and I have had a conversation about that in the past, about bringing some boxes.
Okay, I've had a lot of conversation. I'm trying to get that ball moving. I dropped a, dropped, I dropped a box off with poor old Austin.
The one I gave you.
And his office is bulging and it seems we may have to do special work or to get somebody, outsider to do it, yeah.
Contracted.
So I just want to encourage.
And and we talked about that.
We've talked about that a lot.
We talked about that years, like, I think, before Chelsea, that that's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, this is something that I, I mean, I would say every, you know, every, every year we talked about it, but this is something we talked about four years ago.
The time sensitive part of what Bob's mentioning is all of the requisitions for Pelican Preserve. I know Ed Hedges is here in the audience, but he's been leading the GIS updating with Passarella. And so getting all of those banker's boxes, Tony's got in his storage somewhere. That way, we can hire a company I've used before. They they scan them, they digitize them, they bring you the hard copies back, and then they bring you a digital copy. I'd love to do the same thing with the hot box. I'll tell you right now, it's costly, but it's worth its weight in gold.
It'll pay for itself in the long. We got to do it.
It seems like every time we get that hot box in a, what appears to be a organized condition. You go back up there the next time and look like a bomb went off in it.
It is, it is.
I've missed the organized condition. I've been there a couple of times.
There's been a couple of times where it was organized, but it didn't last long.
I take your word.
But I just want to make sure that when we get done, we don't pitch anything.
Oh, no.
Anything until we go, at least go through it. Because there are some drawings up there. I know when we had the issue about the electrical in Gateway. I found documents up there. So I mean, there's, there is a wealth of information, but.
Yeah, Chelsea, we've talked, I've actually kept all of my agendas and minute books going way back, but I think you have them all.
Those file drawers are the ones that are a nightmare. They are a nightmare.
Okay, the last item I have is within the, our book this time, is a bunch of requisitions for the whole year of the various subcommittees, everything that was spent. So I sent the notice to customer service.
Now, you see something in the charge?
Customer care.
Customer care to make you some pictures or copies that I can distribute it to the work group members of the three subcommittees. They really need to understand what's within their scope of work. And that request was denied. And I don't agree with that, but it was. So I want to make sure they know that I'm going to go and copy over here. Oops, lost myself.
My, my, no, my, what I, I I denied to print them, but I did produce a PDF version that will go with each of the committee's financials in their next meetings.
We're not, we're eighty years old.
Okay, so I I have a question.
He asked for twenty copies of a twenty-seven page document, which is five hundred sheets of paper.
Yeah.
Okay, I I understand that, but but is that something that we budget for? No.
Not all those copies.
Well, we got a budget for copies.
But well, and the safety and security doesn't have anything in there anyway, so it would just be ponds and landscape.
Committees, landscape.
There's nothing in there for safety and security, though.
Okay, that is the two of them.
Two, yeah. And P-PAC.
I don't understand why, we're talking about eight cents worth of paper per copy or whatever. This thing we ought to get. Put it in their hands so they can see it and know the things they're responsible for.
We we don't have that in Word or something?
I put it in an electronic document and he did not, he didn't want that.
My guys are not going to look at the electronic.
Oh, you're you're, you want hard copy.
So so here's my question. I I can see that we want to go digital, but if we did a record, if if any of the residents there did a records request for paper copy, would it give it to them?
We have to charge them for it, but yes.
We'll charge it if it goes past X amount of hours.
It's per page for copy, for paper. Digital is free.
No wonder I didn't want to use that.
Wait, hold on.
That's in our fee schedule.
On the fee schedule?
Yes. Yep, per statute. We charge, if somebody wants paper. If they're electronic, there's no charge unless it's more than a half an hour to pull the data.
Okay. I I don't recall that. I recall there was a thirty minutes, I think.
That's for the electronic research. Yep. Anything we send electronically, we don't charge for unless it takes me two hours to pull it. But anything paper is per page. I mean, if you guys want me to have to use an entire ream of paper to print out a bunch of stuff, I will. I will, I will do, I'll ask order to do it tomorrow and we'll we'll have it if the board wishes. I think it's a waste of paper. I'm sorry. I, we're trying really hard to be digital and be more environmentally conscious and there's a lot of information in there. So I I'll do whatever the board directs, but right now I'm.
A lot of people want the hard copies, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand that part.
I I'm on the same boat. If if that's the tool that they need, if it's if the.
It's been requested by Bob, though, not by the committees.
Because they don't know that. That's why this was in our board book.
It's not a request from the committees. It's a request from Bob.
Correct. Bob wants to educate his committees.
Which is actually my job as.
So then how about do you follow up with the committee and if the.
I will ask them. I'll send it out electronically and I'll say, if you'd like it printed, we will be happy to do that for you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. That delays it another month?
No, I'll do it now. I can send them out tomorrow. We'll send everything out tomorrow. I'll explain what it is. I'll put a nice email together. I'll make sure you're copying it so you can see it. That defeats.
I know. I'll kill a tree because I want to have the data.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay, I have two, I just have two comments. Actually, one is just a question regarding Pelican Preserve. Do we exercise?
The the levels aren't high enough to exercise, so we'll probably have to wait until next rainy season. But we did get confirmation from South Florida, from Lee County. And I think we were waiting on the city of Fort Myers to weigh in, but really, South Florida was the big one that we had to get approval from.
Tell about exercises in the wears?
Yeah, because it was up to the top.
They, ex, hold on. Exercising up and down, we do that annually, if not.
You want the the twenty-four hours?
They wanted to do a twenty-four hour time span to lower the weir to test how much water.
It dropped.
They dropped.
In a time period?
Yeah. But the but the water levels are too low at this point.
Correct.
So we'll have to wait until next.
Are you over control?
We were.
We're up, we're.
We were. We were at control. We were all the way up to top.
Oh, we're still over control?
But we got this thing down. I can't speak to thirty-eight. I haven't gone out there in the last week to look at it. A week ago, it was above the weir.
I would think if we're over control, you'd be over control.
I would think so, too.
So and just to wrap that up, we did notify the pond subcommittee that they need to, the ponds, Pelican Ponds Group, that they need to put in a gauge, staff gauge. That way, we can measure the drop over that time span. So that has to happen prior to.
There's not a staff gauge on there?
No.
Oh, you definitely.
Well, but but if we, if the weir drops, you don't need a gauge. You just go measure it, how how tall that weir opening is, right?
If you're going to, if you're going to try to take and have a recording gauge, you got to have something there. But if you're not, if it's just instantaneous, just go to the weir, you know the weir elevation and subtract it.
If it went from twenty-four inches to the lower end of the weir, it might be eighteen inches, I think it's six inches, might be eight.
The the request was made to have a staff gauge. Their nominal, nominal cost probably cost a ream of paper.
Less than a ream of paper.
To install it.
Oh, boy.
Get it, get it.
We'll install it, Tony.
Free, free yardstick at the county fair and tack it onto the the edge.
But the answer is, yes, we're getting, we're making progress on it, but we're going to miss this year unless we get a big rainstorm.
All right. And then my last comment, I just want to bring it up to the board. So last Sunday, I was again denied access to Stony Brook Community at their gate. I did speak with Joel McCalka and I also spoke with Joel Tarja.
Joe Tarja is the.
Which is the owner of state.
Statewide security.
Statewide.
I was beyond disappointed. It was a thirty-five to forty-minute ordeal at the gate. And even after Joe, you know, spoke with the guard and say, I am the owner of the company. You're going to have to let them in. I was still refused entry, access to the community. It took a supervisor to have to drive there ten minutes and me waiting there to actually allow me into the community. So I just want to bring that to the, to, you know, to everyone.
What do you do over there?
I don't know. I want to just bring that to everyone's attention. I know Chelsea has asked me to give a full recap of everything. I have that in here. I just got to look at it again, make sure I have everything accurately.
This is not the first instance that this has occurred. We did, this did happen within the last year where Laura was denied access. We did notify in writing with legal counsel assisting and drafting the letter that if this occurred again, that we could exercise our rights in terminating the agreement for breach of contract. So we will be sending a letter to statewide security. I I I don't know. They they haven't reached out to us and notified us of the incident formally, which is another.
Is this just a young, new guard or something?
I I did not know. I think he was covering shift. But I will say this, Joe, you know, I I I reached out to him at the gate. I said, look, it's happening again, you know, before I contacted staff, because that's what they asked. They said, let me know if there's an issue. And I did. And then I did receive a call from one of their staff apologizing for the issue. And so they did reach out to me personally, you know, on Monday regarding that. They were extremely apologetic. They said there was a guard that was just covering a shift and did not know. My biggest issue is that I asked him specifically to read the post orders. He refused. I I asked him, I said, bring them to me and I'll point it out where, because I actually have it highlighted. He refused. So I think, you know.
You need to get a better car.
Apparently. I know. So I just want to let you guys all know.
Well, I've also had.
That's the problem.
Yes, go ahead. Chelsea, I've also had a few people reach out to me, too, that there's been several instances where traffic has been backed up and it's stopped traffic going both ways on Gateway Boulevard. So if you are reaching out to Stony Brook and or Joe, you know, we, that's something that we can't have happen.
Well, we're we're definitely going to send a letter to the owner of the company. And honestly, termination of the agreement would be the the next course of action. But then that would leave that that community without a security.